Okay, Mr. Vice Mayor, if you would like to call your meeting to order, we will begin our broadcast.
Okay, I'll call this meeting to order and we'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'll go ahead and lead us in that today.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, equal and just.
Mr. Vice Mayor, the first item today is roll call for the Reno City Council, and I believe we are still transitioning a couple of council members in. We'll begin with roll and then we will go back as needed. Breckus?
I'll note for the record that she's here and I can visibly see her room is on mute, but she's just not at her computer just at this second.
Thank you. Dewar?
Here.
Delgado?
Yes, sorry about that.
Unmuted, thank you. Weber?
Here.
Thank you. Jordan?
Here.
Reese?
Here.
And Sheevy?
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Vice Mayor, you do have a quorum of the Reno City Council.
Okay, and for the record, Councilmember Breckus is here as well, and so please note her attendance.
Thank you. Noted for the record. With that, Mr. Vice Mayor, transitioning to our general public comment today. While we are transitioning to IT to confirm any of our attendees who have preregistered for their three minutes of public comment, I will note for the record that we received a letter of support from Donna Clontz, a letter of opposition from Ralph Coppola, and a letter of opposition for status quo budget adoption from Stephen and Sharice Chavez. Additionally, we received online comments and concerns from Robert Calhoun, Ron Souza, Andrea Corbett, Richard Davis, Adriana Piche, and Ralph Stephen Coppola on a separate issue. These have been submitted to council and are part of the official record.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, did you say we did have a number of people that had signed in or preregistered?
Mr. Vice Mayor, we do have some preregistrations. However, it does not appear at this time that they are logged in.
Okay, well, let's do this. Let's go to A4, and then if for some reason we've made some technical errors on the IT end, or they have, we could come back to it, I suppose, and we'll see if we can't find a way to patch them in now. I'll transition over to our city manager, Jason Soto.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, Madam Mayor, and Council. Hopefully today, we should have a shorter agenda than the one you considered on the 13th. Of note, after today's consent agenda, you will hear a contract extension for Local 39. We will also hear another installment of your Reignite Reno package, this time talking about how our parks programming will operate in COVID world as we jump into summer with both feet. I know all of you have heard a lot from people in the community about Item C3, the Evans Creek annexation. Staffs put a lot of hours in answering your questions about these items, and a lot of people are interested in this particular item. I'd also like to remind Council, we have an attorney-client briefing that should be in your calendars already for 11:00 AM today, but we're ready to host that at your convenience. With that, Mr. Vice Mayor, I present to you your agenda for May 27, 2020.
Okay, and so I'm going to come back to the clerk now because I think we've gotten our public comment situated, and so we'll come back to that. Thank you for your comments, Mr. City Manager, and we'll come back to approval of the agenda and a motion in just a minute. Thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor, transitioning at this time to our general public comment under A3. These are persons who have preregistered to be able to speak. As a reminder to each of our public commenters, you are afforded three minutes. We ask that you address the council as a whole. Additionally, please be cognizant and respectful of your time and language while you're on this call today. First to speak in general public comment is Shane Wilson, followed by Kathy Rosner, followed by Alicia Barber. At this time, we will unmute. Shane Wilson?
Hello?
Mr. Wilson, you're with us. You may begin whenever you're ready.
Oh, hi. This is the first time I've been to... Actually, I do have a question. If I wanted to run for Reno City Council Ward 1, how would I go about doing that?
Mr. Wilson, my name is Ashley Turney, and I'm the Reno City Clerk. I oversee the election for the city of Reno. Generally, while the council does not respond to public comment, I am happy to answer that information for you if you'd like to contact my office. I do have your email, and I will send you an email and give you information on that.
Okay.
Okay? And if there... Do you have anything further today, Mr. Wilson?
No, I'm just really interested in politics. I just wanted to learn more about how to run for office.
Okay. Mr. Wilson, thank you for your comments today, and my office will be in touch with you shortly.
I'll leave that.
Thank you. Mr. Vice Mayor, with that, our next public comment is from Kathy Rosner, followed by Alicia Barber. At this time, Ms. Rosner, we will take you off of mute. You will be afforded three minutes. You will need to unmute yourself on your end as well.
Ms. Rosner, if you can hear me, this is Reno City Councilman Devin Reese, and you are muted on your end, so you're going to have to unmute yourself from your computer before we can hear you in chambers. We'll give you just another second to figure that piece out. Okay, Ms. Rosner, we're going to go on to our next public commenter, and we'll circle back with you in a minute and see if we can't help you get into the queue. I think our next public commenter is Alicia Barber, and I'll let you, Madam Clerk, bring this barber into the conversation.
Ms. Barber, you've been unmuted, and you may begin your comments.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, welcome to the chambers.
Thank you. Good morning. My name's Alicia Barber. I'm a professional historian who specializes in Reno's development, and I'm here to say a few words about the Skyway ordinance. At your direction, the Planning Commission was asked last week to recommend amending that ordinance by eliminating the requirement for a design review committee that would review any proposed Skyway before it's reviewed by Planning Commission or City Council. If you hadn't heard, the Planning Commission voted five to two not to recommend this change to the design review guidelines and to keep the committee requirement intact. They discussed this item for over an hour, and I really hope you'll take the time to go back and watch that discussion. They also received comments from numerous individuals and organizations all opposed to making this change. I'm here to urge you in the strongest possible terms to take the Planning Commission's advice not to proceed with the effort to eliminate the design review committee, and instead to agendize an item that can clarify the process for appointing this committee so that you can move forward with meeting the current code requirement. The design review committee is an absolutely critical part of the Skyway's ordinance and should not be eliminated as a way of supposedly streamlining the approval process. In your April 8 meeting, Arlo Stockham told you that the construction of UNR's Skyway was now being held up by the delay in approval, suggesting that eliminating this committee was the best method for moving this project along efficiently, but giving you none of the background for why this requirement was instituted in the first place and the citywide repercussions of eliminating it. According to code, this review committee is to consist of individuals recommended by five entities: the Nevada Chapters of the American Institute for Architects, American Society of Landscape Architects, and American Planning Association, the Reno Planning Commission, and the Citizens Advisory Committee to the Redevelopment Agency, which I think has been renamed. A planning commission, Angela Fuze, said that your attorneys told her the only way to form this committee would be to open up applications to the entire community, then ask those organizations named in the code to sift through all of those applications and select a representative and alternate to represent them. I don't believe this is correct. City Council has the ability to directly appoint members to an advisory board without opening applications to the entire community, and in this particular case, you're even given specific direction in code for which organizations to ask for representatives. This committee does not currently exist or meet for the simple reason that there has not been a Skyway proposed in 20 years. Your predecessors put in this requirement anticipating this moment, and the reasons that they did so have not changed. Public comment can't possibly substitute for the thorough deliberations of a professional-appointed committee. I don't have the time right now to explain why this committee is so crucial, so I'm writing up a piece about that, which I hope you'll read, and that will generate public discussion and input from design professionals. My goal, as always, is to help you to make the most informed decisions for our city. Thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor, our next public comment that we have is from Ralph Coppola. At this time, Mr. Coppola, we will... It appears that we have actually lost him. Since he called in, he has dropped off of the call. So at this time, Mr. Vice Mayor, if you'd like, we can try to go back to Ms. Rosner one more time. Kathy Rosner, you are unmuted on our end. You will need to unmute on your end. You can do this also by pushing star six if you have called in from a phone. All right, Mr. Vice Mayor, with that, I would recommend that we transition from public comment back to your agenda. It should be noted, there has been a request from staff to pull Item B10 off of your agenda and reschedule this for a future agenda. So with that, if there are no other changes from the manager, you would be looking for a motion at this time.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve Dewar.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Dewar. Do I have a second?
Second, Weber.
A second by Councilmember Weber. Any further discussion on this item at this time? Seeing none, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Vice Mayor, with that, we are transitioning to our approval of our minutes, and it should be noted that there was a typographical error on the April 22 meeting. There was a misspelling of the word lean. With that information, we'll be updated and recommending approval from council.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Move to approve all three sets of minutes.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Weber, a second by Councilmember Jordan. Any further discussion on this item at this time? Seeing none, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Vice Mayor, your next item is your consent agenda. Should be noted that we received public comment from Mary Jiki Beacon on Item B8 with concerns. This has been submitted to council and is part of the official record.
Thank you. Okay, let's start off with council members wishing to pull items from the agenda. Councilmember Breckus, can we start with you?
I don't have any, but I did not see that concern on Item B8, and so maybe I would like to pull it and ask the clerk when that was sent.
Okay, for now, we'll pull Item B8, and we'll come back to that. Councilmember Dewar, any items?
Not at this time. I just want to mention B8 and Ward 2.
Okay, thank you. Ward 3, Oscar Delgado.
I have none.
Thank you. Councilmember Weber?
I have none, thank you.
Councilmember Jordan?
None, thank you.
Madam Mayor?
None, thank you.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the Item B8 pulled for discussion?
Move to approve.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Weber, a second by Breckus. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Vice Mayor, to note the request from Councilmember Breckus, this was submitted via the online public comment form in which council has access to and is sent. The question is from the constituent regarding the proposal to accept a portion of Old Virginia Road dedicated by tract map 4817. She wants to know where it is bounded, so she will then know if she has any input to share. So it is a generalized question with no position.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Dewar, can I get a motion, please?
Yes, I want to make a motion on this. First of all, I just want to explain, it is a piece of road that is in front of the senior housing that was approved by council and is now built, and apparently the applicant is dedicating, has dedicated the whole road in front of it, and it's all been redone. And I went out and looked at it. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a question.
Councilmember Breckus?
Yeah, the question is, when you said it came on the online format, was that sent by email to us? Madam Clerk?
Yes, this is a link that council has access to and I believe is sent as well. This is a Google form as comes through our online public comment form.
Okay, because I think I got like seven correspondence on items, and I just, I didn't see that one. Let me, let me just, if you just indulge me a second, because I did have a question about why only one side of the street has been improved? Is it a one-way road, or will the traffic being going on the other side that's unimproved?
My understanding is that they paved the entire road, even though they only owed, had a responsibility to pave half the road, they paved the whole road, both sides.
That's different from what I heard.
Maybe we could have staff address it.
Give us one second, and let's see if staff is prepared to address that item. If not, we can, we have a motion. I haven't heard a second, but is Ms. Fuze or Mr. Stockham available?
I believe it was Mr. Michael Michelle who was involved.
I know, but I don't see him on at this moment, so give me a second. Ms. Fuze, would you like to speak? Thank you.
Good morning, council members. This is Arlo Stockham. I'm assuming you can hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, Councilwoman Dewar was correct. The entire road was improved. The dedication is for half-street improvements because they only own half the street.
Who owns the other half?
I believe it's one of the other shopping centers, but it's a public right-of-way in one form or another.
So it's both travel lanes is being dedicated, not just half of the travel lane?
What's being dedicated is the entirety of the right-of-way owned by this property owner. They don't own any of the street.
No, so the other side is owned by the property owner to the east, but what's being dedicated is the property owned by the applicant developer. They happen to have paved both sides of the road.
It would appear that the property owner to the east is the State of Nevada Department of Transportation. So are we maintaining, then, the State of Nevada transportation right-of-way?
We currently maintain it, yes we do.
No, we're not. The, this section of roadway is not owned by NDOT. It's owned by a private entity. The ownership of this old roadway is convoluted. It's a checkerboard of parcel lines when you look at it, but this is a longstanding public right-of-way. It doesn't meet criteria to be a private street. This applicant is, in effect, doing everything required of them, has improved the entire street, and is offering the portion of their property that's right-of-way to the city for standard dedication process.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Dewar, a second by Councilmember Jordan. Any further discussion on this item at this time? Seeing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, I'm going to come back to you. It sounds like we've had one of our technical difficulties ironed out and are now ready to go back for just a brief moment to one commenter in the queue, Mr. Ralph Coppola.
That is correct. Mr. Vice Mayor, we will reopen public comment as we did not see Mr. Coppola before, and he dropped off the call. He is now back with us. So with this, Mr. Coppola, you will be afforded three minutes. Please address the council as a whole while being respectful of the decorum of this room. You're unmuted on our end, and you may begin your comments.
Good morning. First, I'd like to ask for extra time only on the issue of it took me 25 minutes to figure out how to join this meeting. I started using computers in 1979, and very few people know computers as laypeople better than I. So this is atrocious, number one. Now onto my comment that I wanted to make. This meeting is unconstitutional. It does not meet the clear and convincing evidence required for a pandemic. The Iranian parliament can find its way to me in person. The president can have press conferences. California, I mean Nevada is reopening the casinos on June 4, and yet this city council is choosing to act unconstitutionally by not allowing members of the public to be present when I can go to a restaurant, and I will bet you a slot machine that at least one of you has been to a restaurant, and I'm certain most of you have been to Costco or Save Mark. So you're lying to the public, and I think you should all be recalled, and thank you very much for this. Goodbye. That's all.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Coppola. Mr. Vice Mayor, it should be noted, we have no further general public comment at this time. You have closed out your consent agenda. We will now be transitioning to Item C1, which is a 10:00 AM public hearing for the Local 39 Supervisory Collective Bargaining Agreement.
Okay, let the record reflect, the city council is opening the public hearing on Item C1. Madam Clerk, was proper notice given? Any correspondence received?
Mr. Vice Mayor, proper notice was given on this item and no correspondence was received. Additionally, we do not have any public comment preregistered or submitted online.
Okay, in the absence of council members needing to make disclosures, I'm going to turn this over to our city manager, Chief Manager Soto, for some general comments, and then if a staff presentation is desired, we'll move in that direction. Chief Soto?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Reese. I will make this brief, but before Mr., our HR Director Gregerson presents us with these contracts, I'd like to take a moment to say thank you to both Mr. Gregerson and Local 39 for getting together and working out this contract with no raises or costs of living associated with it. I also want to take a quick moment to thank Councilmember Dewar for recommending that we pursue a seven-month extension rather than six, so we will not be rehaving this conversation in December. So thank you to Mr. Gregerson and Local 39. It just shows how we can work so diligently together and actually get things done even during this COVID-19 pandemic. Thank you.
Okay, let's transition to Mr. Gregerson, and I apologize, I just can't see everybody who might be on the call. We have 35 participants. Mr. Gregerson, are you prepared to make a staff presentation?
We are transitioning Mr. Gregerson over to a panelist now and taking him off of mute. I do not believe that there is a standardized presentation, however, he is available to answer questions if council should have any.
Okay, let's start with that. Questions from the council for staff, if there are any? Councilmember Dewar?
Yes, thank you. I just want to compliment this group for having the foresight to move forward with this kind of proposal for an agreement and being willing to understand the kind of conditions that we're all operating under and the fiscal impacts that we'll undoubtedly be discussing in ensuing months. And the fact that they also agreed to a seven-month extension means that we're not in the middle of December trying to renegotiate this contract. I think it's much better done in January. So thanks to all that were involved. Thank you.
And I echo Councilmember Dewar's thoughts and concerns, and just thank Local 39 for their position, and also to Mr. Gregerson and staff for working on this. If there are no other questions, I'll make certain that public comment has been opened and closed, per the record, and then see if I can ask Councilmember Dewar to return for a motion.
Is there any public comment?
There is none.
Oh, it looks like Councilmember Jordan also has raised her hand. Give me one second, Councilmember Dewar, and I'll come back to you. Councilmember Jordan?
Thank you very much, and maybe this is a, and I do appreciate Local 39's cooperation and understanding of the conditions with him. I guess my question is maybe a little separate. We had talked about having a bi-weekly budget meeting to discuss all things COVID and contracts and potential cuts. I didn't get anything on a calendar invite that I've seen so far. I'm very curious when we're having that meeting.
I believe that it will happen on June 3. Part of the issue is that the calendar, or I'm sorry, that this agenda was published and produced before our last meeting, and so it just didn't get added to this agenda. And so it's not a lack of recognition by the staff that that was asked for, but simply that we had already posted the agenda after the time that we'd requested it. So I would expect to see that on our next agenda and also moving forward on every agenda thereafter.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Dewar, let's return for a motion.
Yes, I would move to accept and approve the agreement as proposed on the agenda for Local 39.
Second, hello?
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Dewar, a second by Councilmember Delgado. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Vice Mayor, transitioning to Item C2, approval of the Local 39 Non-supervisory Collective Bargaining Agreement.
Okay, let the record reflect, the city council is opening the public hearing on Item C2. Madam Clerk, I believe proper notice was given and no correspondence was received. Is that correct?
That is correct, Mr. Vice Mayor.
And no council members have any disclosures? I don't believe there's a staff presentation, but are there questions for staff? Madam Clerk, make sure that public comment is reflected as being opened and also now closed. Any discussions or further comments? Seeing none, I'll transition to Councilmember Dewar for a motion on this item.
I want to echo my comments I made. The previous agreement was for the Local 39 Supervisory Section. This one is for the Local 39 Non-supervisory Unit, and I want to say the same comments that I said before, which I'm extremely grateful, first for the leadership of the supervisory unit, and now for the staff members that are part of Local 39. I think what they've done is exemplary in this particular condition. I know that it began before the pandemic, but it continued through the pandemic, and I really appreciate what they are doing for the city of Reno. And with that, I would make a motion to adopt the collective bargaining agreement between City of Reno and Local 39 Non-supervisory Unit.
Second, hello?
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Dewar, a second by Councilmember Delgado. Any other further discussion at this time? Seeing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Vice Mayor, transitioning to Item C3. This is a continuation from the May 13 meeting for the second portion, in which we will open the public hearing for the Evans Creek annexation.
Okay, let the record reflect, the city council is now opening the public hearing on Item C3. Madam Clerk, I assume proper notice was given and was correspondence received?
Mr. Vice Mayor, proper notice was given. We received one letter of support, 55 letters of opposition, and 30 letters of concern. These have all been submitted to council as part of the official record. It should be noted, these also include comments from the May 13 meeting as well, as they have been transitioned over for this item.
Thank you. And do any council members need to make disclosures at this time? Seeing none, I want to go now to our city attorney's office for introduction or reading of the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Ordinance introduction, bill number 7141.
Do you know what item? Oh, they forgot me. I got to go.
Hold on. Madam Mayor, hold on one second. I think we're not on mute. Okay, Mr. Hall, if you could start over again, please.
Sure. Ordinance introduction, bill number 7141, case number ANX20-0000. Sure. Ordinance introduction, bill number 7141, case number ANX20-00003, Evans Creek Annexation. Ordinance annexing two and making part of the City of Reno certain specifically described territory being plus or minus 1,019 acres of property located on the south side of South McCarran Boulevard, with frontage spanning plus or minus 1,840 feet west and 1,870 feet east of the intersection of South McCarran Boulevard and Manzanita Lane within the City of Reno sphere of influence and the Truckee Meadows service area, Washoe County, Nevada, together with other matters properly relating thereto.
Thank you, Mr. Hall, and then we'll start with a staff presentation. I know that we received a fairly lengthy presentation during our last meeting. Let's see, Ms. Foose or Mr. Stockham?
We have Ms. Foose. We also have Nathan Gilbert will also be available with a presentation.
Okay, let's start there with Ms. Foose then, or Mr. Gilbert.
Good morning. Good morning. For the record, Angela Foose, Acting Community Development Director. I do have just a few slides. If we can either share my screen, or Ashley, do you have it on your end, whatever the preference is.
At this time, Angela, you can go ahead and share your screen, and we'll allow you to advance your slides so you can control it.
Okay. And can everyone see the screen?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Foose.
Great. I just wanted to go over maybe three things. We have gotten a number of questions from the neighbors, and there's, maybe just to put it on the record for clarification more so than anything else. This is a request simply for an annexation. We've had a lot of questions about where are the roads going to be? What type of housing products will be here? Where will the housing go? Just so everyone is aware, this is simply for annexation. So there is no development associated with this request. We do have a map there. Hopefully, everyone can see that. This property has two legal points of access. So as of today, there are two points of access. One is on the north, on McCarran, and one is on the very southern end, on Lone Tree Lane. And I've highlighted those on the map just more so again for the neighbors to see. There's been a lot of questions about where will development tie? And will it tie into existing neighborhoods?
If I could interrupt you, Ms. Foose, but our point is not progressing with your comments, so.
All right, let's try this again. Does that work?
No, you had it before, but it just wasn't moving. Maybe if you put on slideshow from the beginning, it will work.
Okay, well, give me a sec. It looks like I've got too many screens showing.
Okay, it just moved there, and I think we can, there you have it.
There we go. Does that work it?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that, guys. Yep, so here's the map. Again, this is the total 1,019 acres, and the two points of access are McCarran Boulevard on the very northern end of the property and Lone Tree Lane on the very southern end of the property. So again, just to give everyone understanding, there are no legal access points beyond those two points. In the future, if a development were to come forward, they would have to show where they are getting legal access. And so at this point, those are the only two legal access points. Another question we've been given or asked quite a bit is related to open space. And so I wanted to highlight where the existing open space areas are. Some of these are part of the Ballardini open space. Part of this is the Arrow Creek Homeowners Association open space, and part of this is just Forest Service and BLM open space. So again, the property is to the north of the majority of that open space area. While at this time, there is no plan for development, when a plan comes forward, they will have to show their road connections, their trail connections, their utility connections. But at this time, because we are just reviewing an annexation, none of that is shown with an annexation request. So hopefully, that helps to just provide a little bit more information to the public in terms of trails and access on those two items. And then finally, what's before you today is an annexation. And while we don't have findings for an annexation, we do have review factors. And these are the 10 items that council needs to take into consideration as you're reviewing this request. So I've highlighted those 10 items. And I, again, if it's your preference to kind of go through those individually, talk globally, these are the things that you are making, reviewing as part of your decision-making. But again, these are not findings like you would typically have associated with a zone change or with a special use permit. So annexations are slightly different in that respect. But with that, I will leave it open to questions. I do have slides if we need to point to anything else. But other than that, I wanted to just open it up to questions from the council.
Okay, at this time, we're not going to take council questions. We're going to transition to the applicant's presentation, and then we'll come back for questions from the body for both the applicant or staff. Thank you, Ms. Foose, for your comprehensive report both this week and last. And now I think we'll transition back to Madam Clerk so we can enter our folks into the chambers.
Mr. Vice Mayor, at this time, we will transition to the applicant's representative, Frank Thompson. Mr. Thompson, we have unmuted you on our end. You'll need to unmute on yours.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson, and welcome. You'll have 10 minutes.
Thank you. Well, my presentation will be very brief and will simply be what I had to say at the last meeting.
Mr. Thompson, is that your presentation? I apologize. Yes, I was here and recall the presentation, but do you wish to reiterate any of your points?
Well, I think I would very briefly.
Sure, thank you. The floor is yours.
As follows. Sure, thank you. I would just point out that the city staff has now submitted two separate staff reports that have analyzed the 10 factors that Ms. Foose just put on the on the screen, and those are the factors provided in Reno Municipal Code, section 18.04.301. And they, in both staff reports, recommended unconditional approval. The staff reports have also thoroughly discussed the policy 2.1D of the City of Reno Master Plan. The staff report analyzed in detail the community goals that would be met by the proposed annexation. The unconditional recommendation for approval made by the staff twice is for very good reason. And the reason for that is the annexation is a very logical extension of the Reno City of Limits because this property is an infill property, and the, it is surrounded by City of Reno development on the north and on the west and on the east. It's a high-end infill property as reflected in the fiscal impact analysis that we submitted in January and the supplemental fiscal impact analysis submitted in February, the development will have a very positive economic impact on the City of Reno. It will provide much-needed housing in this very well-documented housing crisis. In short, it is a high-end infill property that would be a terrific addition to the City of Reno, and we're here to answer any questions about it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your. Thank you. Thank you, sir. We appreciate your being here today. I'll transition now to questions from my colleagues. And I know that a number of folks have their hands raised, so let me just start. Sorry, I've got to get the screen up.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I would also like to note that Nathan Gilbert is the planner on this case, and he is available for questions as well as Ms. Foose.
Okay, and as I understand it, there's also going to be a public comment period after the questions for the applicant or staff. And so we'll start with questions from the body. Councilmember Breckus.
Thank you. Ms. Foose, could you put the map up that shows the parcel location? I'd like to run through some of the annexation factors of consideration in a little more detail because I still, I have some questions about the staff report. Are you able to share your screen? Okay. Now, I don't know if that's the best one. Yeah, maybe that one. Tell me this, how many pars, it's four parcels. I see separating the north and south what appears to be the remnants of a section line. How many parcels are north of that, and how many parcels are south of that?
Sorry about that.
Thank you.
There is one parcel, sorry, there's one parcel to the north and three parcels to the south.
Okay. Do you happen to have the acreage breakup of that one parcel north of the section line and the three parcels south of the section line? They look about equal size.
To the north, it is 420 acres. To the south, it is 599 acres.
Okay, so, and to the north, the one to the north, I think it is accurate to say is surrounded by city on three sides because that parcel to the south doesn't, attaches unincorporated. But, and I see, I see development of hillside suburban character to the to the north and to the east. But to the west, is that the Pines subdivision, planning, plan unit development?
To the west is, yes, the Whispering Pines.
And has that, that's Whispering Pines?
So can you see that map? Whispering Pines is the part that's already developed?
Yes, Whispering Pines, I know. But south of the Whispering Pines, is that the Pines PUD?
That is also, I believe, part of that PUD.
No, Whispering Pines is Colin Ranch, and the Pines is a separate plan unit development.
Yeah, let me just pull up that map while I've got you.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand the adjacency and the logical extension of the city boundaries.
So to the west, it's actually, you're correct, that's the Pines SPD, so that's that separate specific plan district.
It's a SPD, not a PUD? Okay.
Correct, correct.
Okay, and then to the south, the three parcels to the south, the larger encompassing area, it is bound to the east by unincorporated Washoe County semi-rural lands?
Correct.
And then to the south is general rural, the south and the the south and the west is that general rural, or is that lands of the federal government?
That is all open space, and some of it is HOA, some of it is private. Well, it's Washoe County open space, and some is federal government.
Okay, so it's, when you say opens, I mean, open space, I guess it's public land of a non-federal public land. So the three parcels to the south, in my view, look different than the one parcel to the north in terms of adjacency and logical extension of the city boundaries. Do you care to comment on that?
No, I mean, I think maybe this map would help as well. The master plan map breaks it into the same kind of geographic differentiation that you're talking about. You know, that 400 acres to the north has that single-family neighborhood master plan. Whereas those three parcels on the southern side have an unincorporated transition, that's typically more of a rural nature. So there's definitely a delineation between the north half and the south half. I think you're correct, absolutely.
And we're into a hillside nature. Is there a topography differential between the, either side of this old section line?
The property on the north has slopes, the majority of the northern parcel, those slopes are about in the 15% range. The property on the south definitely has more slopes in the 30% range.
Okay.
Councilmember Breckus, can I come back to you for another round of questioning after we?
If I could just make a concluding comment, those are my questions related to factor one, location of the property for annexation and logical extension for the boundaries, and I'm certainly ready to defer and get into the other criteria on the next round. Thank you, Presiding Officer Reese.
Thank you. Councilmember Doer.
Thank you. I had a number of questions. Upon reading the staff report, it's apparent that the applicant did not provide slope information to the detail requested, nor did they provide a concurrent master plan which relates back to our Reimagined Reno master plan, which requires, let me put it this way, highly encourages the concurrent to middle of a master plan. And the reason this is important is that many, many people have written in, and one of their concerns is what does this potential development look like? What does it feel like? And I understand that we're only at annexation, but annexation is the first step in a development, and in order for the council to understand what is being requested to be annexed and for what purpose, it seems to me that we need to understand that, particularly in that in the staff report, there are conflicts with the number of housing units. There are numbers ranging from 203 to 500 some, to 1,200 some. And the economic analysis, you know, there were two economic analysis, as I recall, submitted, financial analysis. And so what this has led to is a great deal of concern and confusion on my part to really understand what would we be annexing and why, for what end? And it really speaks to the need for expansion to accommodate planned regional growth. So it's very difficult to evaluate this application and the potential impacts on our community, either benefits or impacts, either one. I don't understand how many houses are planned. I don't understand where they would fit on slopes. I don't see a master plan. And I, I don't understand in terms of the legal access that Ms. Foose brought up. I don't think you can only access a 1,000-acre parcel with two roads, one of which is an improved county lane. So those are some questions that I have. I don't know if staff can address those issues, you know, if you'd like to try. Thank you.
Sure. When, when they first submitted the application, they came in with a fiscal impact analysis, and it was based on 203 units. And we let them know that with annexation, upon approval, there is a conversion table in our code. So a, the fiscal impact analysis should be based on what the total unit count would be based on annexation. We let them know that the number, just purely based on going from the conversion of Washoe County to City of Reno, again, land use and zoning, we'd be looking at 1,256 units. That does not take into account any site constraints such as hillsides or drainage ways, things that you typically would look at as part of a development project. So strictly based on converting from the county designation to the City of Reno designation, the unit count was 1,256. So they submitted a revised fiscal impact analysis based on that number. Now, our Reimagined Reno has a policy saying that it's when an application comes in for annexation, it's preferred that the master plan also comes in with it, if there's going to be a master plan amendment. It is not required. It is not a code requirement. However, as part of your analysis, when you decide to annex, you're determining whether or not annexation of 1,256 units makes fiscal sense. And so if an applicant, if an applicant was to come forward at a future time with a project, they can either move forward with the 1,256 homes, or they can move forward with a different development that included potentially a master plan amendment and a zone change. Again, you would be reviewing all of that at that time, and that would have to go through the full public hearing process. So based on what's before you today, it's simply the 1,256 dwelling unit count.
But let me ask this just as a follow-up. When I heard Nathan Gilbert at the last meeting say that neither 203 nor 1,256 were right number, and that probably it'd be more like 600, and I think it was referenced in our staff report as well. But my point here is that we're left guessing and predicting, I mean, you've predicted a maximum number of units, I guess, based on probable zoning?
Correct.
And we haven't approved that probable zoning. If there's an implication if we annex this, that some If, there's an implication if we annex this, that some zoning is assigned?
Correct. Once it's annexed, again, and there's a table in the staff report that talks about what that conversion looks like. So, I think what you're getting at is that while the conversion table anticipates 1,256 units, that does not take into account any of the site constraints, such as the slopes, such as the drainageways, such as the Evans Creek. So, if you take that into consideration, you'd most likely be looking at a much reduced unit count, not the 1,256 units, closer to the 600 unit count. But again, without a slope analysis, we don't have that, that number, that factual number. We're just basing it off our best estimate based on slope data that we were able to obtain using GIS information.
Thank you. I'm sure someone else's turn, so I'll just leave it there. I have other questions, but I want to let others speak. And I'll have questions after the public comment as well.
Thank you. Let me come back now to Councilmember Brekis. Councilmember Brekis, I know you had just addressed one of the factors, but you had other questions, so I'll come back to you now.
Thank you. Factor number three, the need for expansion to accommodate regional growth, which addresses some of the conversion factors when we annex. And to me, you know, the ordinance goes straight to the conversion. And the conversion is, you know, the 1,256 units. It would appear that the, the unincorporated transition lands, these three parcels to the south, would have a conversion of 10, 22, and 8. So, that's 40 residential units of varying size from 40 acres to 5 acres. And I think I had asked for an analysis, the most recent one, which was in the lands, when we did the master plan. So, the land supply of 40 properties between 5 and 40 acres, are we in shortage of supply of those? Or surplus of supply of those? Per the, the last data that we did when we looked at the land supply?
The, maybe to kind of summarize, when we did the Reimagine Reno master plan amendment, as part of that, we did a study. It was a housing demand and housing forecast, and that was done in 2016. And the outcome of that is that, based on that study, we have more supply in that kind of single-family homes than we do demand. Generally speaking, at that time, we had more of a shortage of supply in the multifamily. There was also a shortage of supply in terms of economic in the affordable housing range. And in general, kind of the outcome of that was that while, as a city, we don't have one type of housing or housing product or financial product that we should be approving or denying. We need, we need a balance. We need a balance of all different types of housing, whether it's apartments or condos, single-family, multifamily. The question is, is if you do it in a way that doesn't negatively impact the city. So, from a fiscal perspective, making sure that as you are bringing in these projects, making sure that it makes good fiscal sense.
Okay. Well, that helps clarify the statement on the staff report in the second paragraph below the conversion table. I don't have pages. That says, "The zoning would be assigned upon annexation would support single-family residential development of approximately 2.91 dwelling units per acre on the north part, and rural densities between .2 and .025 on the southern part." And then it goes on to say that study you referenced says we have a supply, an excess supply of those. So, that for me is the need for expansion to accommodate planned growth. I don't come to the conclusion that, of that narrative in the staff report, that we need this supply. I see the difference. I think it's, it's the supply, it's offering the supply that we don't need. So, I'm having a hard time with that factor concluding that it is a supporting factor based upon that information. And then I'll yield the rest of my time. I'd like to go down to number five in a minute when you come around to me again.
Okay. Councilmember Dewar, and then Councilmember Brekis. I'll come back to you, and we'll start there. Councilmember Dewar.
Yeah, I'll move on to factor four, since my colleagues already addressed three. And factor four talks about the location of existing and planned water and sewer service. And the way that the staff report is written, it's like, well, it's out there. They have to negotiate their water rights. They have, there's a stub out nearby that they can tie into. At our last meeting, I deluded a concern about our sewer. That is sort of passed over in our staff report. But sewer service, including that Tom Wharf, which is what would provide this service, is basically maxed out. While we have existing sewer capacity, Sparks is at their limit, and they have requested part of ours. And so, I don't know right today whether we actually do have the ability to provide this with sewer. Number two, we've received correspondence, the particular one I'm referencing is from Lakewood Shores Water and Easement. It's about their water and easement rights to Evans Creek. I'm not going to get into the issue. They raised a number of points about easements that they have across this property, longstanding water rights, longstanding diversion points. What it just tells me, without getting into it or understanding it, is that there are conflicts on this site related to water easements and water sources and diversion points. And what I would like to see when an easement, or excuse me, an annexation comes to us is that those issues are largely put to rest. And the reason is, is because once we annex a property, we become responsible for it. And that means responsible for fire response, police response, and anything else that the property demands. But if there are longstanding water right issues, my experience as, working in the water field for the last almost 30 years now, is that many times, water right disputes take a long time to resolve. And they're not just easily done, like you meet and you just say, oh yeah, we're all good. I could even speak to the Rantera issue, which had lake dits going across it. And that took at least a year and a half just to work out the easement, the water rights, the shares, and the ditch, and those kind of issues. I think about another property in Verdai that we refuse to consider for further development until water could actually be provided to the site through Tom Wharf. And we, we held up approval of that until those issues were put to rest to our satisfaction as both Tom Wharf Board members and as council members. So, in doing an annexation, knowing that there are already issues out there, I would be hesitant to move forward until those issues have been resolved. I'll just go with the, this applicant mentor, this Lakewood Shores representative mentions the Or Ditch. The Or Ditch decree took over 40 years to resolve. So, what I'm concerned about, you understand, I'm concerned about water issues, sewer issues tying up this property while it is annexed into the City of Reno, and we're responsible for providing services. So, I'll leave that one there. And maybe someone else wants to speak.
Okay. Councilmember Dewar, I'm going to go now to Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, the floor is yours.
All right. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Do we have someone from Fire? Can you just put on the record Fire Service, please?
Mr. Vice Mayor, we have Fire Marshal Trey Palmer is available and has unmuted, and he can answer your questions.
Thank you so much. And I know we had it at the last meeting, but I would like it on the record. Thank you so much.
Yes, I, for the record, this is Trey Palmer, Fire Marshal. And I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, what was the question again?
Oh, just walk through Fire Service, what it is now and what it would be under annexation, please.
So, right now, currently, our closest fire station is Station 7 up on Skyline Boulevard. Because this is annexation only, we don't have any roads within the property to properly compute within the annexation. But at the entrance, we're using the McCarran side, the north side of the property for our response time. And so, Station 7 would be two to four minutes response time to the entrance of the annexation. But again, we can't, without roads and the development inside, we can't properly compute response time within what would be put inside the property. And I know last time you asked about county fire stations. The closest county fire station would be Station 40. That is at 10201 West 4th Street. The response time from that location would be 12 minutes to the entrance off of McCarran. And the other closest fire station would be the county fire station on Foothill Road. That's a county fire station. And that's Station 33, and that would be 10 to 15 minutes, depending on the route to the front entrance, the north entrance on McCarran.
All right. Thank you so much, Trey. I really appreciate it.
Mr. Reese, do we have Mr. Palmer? Can I ask him a question of a Fire Service response nature?
Well, give me a chance just to ask a similar question, and maybe I'll have answered it. But give me one second. I haven't weighed in, but I think this is an important one. And I think our mayor is touching on an issue that's very critically for me, and it's related to item number six in the annexation process. And, and for those of you who know, I have the privilege of representing a number of fire districts in our state and have some intimate knowledge of the WUI code or the Wildland Urban Interface Code. And so, Mr. Palmer, I want to just ask, this area, as I understand it, is in a high-hazard area. And I went out and looked at the subject property from a distance over the weekend. And it's, first of all, it's huge. It's a massive area of land, about 1,028 acres, something like that. But it's right at an area where that interface between urban and wilderness is essentially happening. And so, I don't really understand what the implications for our fire station could be. We're already limiting and limited in this provision of services in some ways, just by the sheer size of the city. But asking for this annexation concerns me because it enters into an area which is prone to fire danger. I mean, there's been fires there over the years, some very recent ones. I saw some of the recovery of that area. I guess I need something from Mr. Palmer that I'm not entirely understanding from the staff report. In order to move forward, I would need to have a lot more information about this particular fire danger that I think this area presents.
Yeah. So, again, Trey Palmer, for the record, you're correct. That area is in what we call a high-hazard wildland urban interface area. And any development that would be proposed there would have to follow the laws in relation to the Wildland Urban Interface Code. We did not specifically adopt that code. However, the state has adopted that code. So, any development would have to have non-combustible construction, proper access, which we will require as well, using the International Fire Code. But it would also have to have a vegetation management plan and some other things during development. As far as fires in the area, yes, we have had numerous fires in the area. I think everybody here is the Collin Ranch Fire. And so, it is in a, well, it's in a wildland urban interface area. So, you do have the potential right now of wildland fire. We do have currently a brush rig stationed at Station 7. However, I will tell you that that has been borrowed from Station 2, which normally protects the north side of town. We temporarily have put it at Station 7 just because we're hitting the summer season and the history that we've had in that area for a more urgent response. But, but I'll leave it at that. Do you have any more questions?
Well, I think you've highlighted an important point, though, too, in your answer, Fire Marshal Palmer. And that is that we're about ready to enter fire season. We have some mutual agreements with Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District. It looks like we allocate a certain number of hours. But at the end of the day, our mayor and this council have been very clear that, you know, public safety is our number-one priority. It's been very personal for the mayor, and I think it's just a very fine point to make, which is that currently, if this area experiences a fire, we may have a small obligation under our mutual aid to respond. And in our, generally, our agencies work very well together. But it's about the cost of that response. And I worry that, given the financial climate that we find ourselves in, and it relates to another subpoint within the annexation criteria, I don't know that we have the financial resources to be able to serve an area this large and for which there have been historical fires and for which we don't really know how it's to be accessed. So, I have just a lot of unknowns and questions that I am not able to resolve for myself. So, I thank you for your comments on it. And I'll go back now. I think we're to the point where we're on our last round of questions from our colleagues. And I'll go to Councilmember Brekis for last round.
Yeah. I mean, I wasn't going to address it, but since Fire Marshal Palmer came on, number six, efficient, cost-effective provision of service areas and capital facilities, seeing on the zoning conversion table that just by adoption of this ordinance, we would have more unit development potential in this area of high wildland threats. And we know our limitations with a fired department that has fewer people than it had before to fight fires, you know, a decade ago. I'm wondering, is density often a factor to fire in these high wildland areas? Is it harder to fight fires when you have more residential units and more people up there in the path? Fire Marshal Palmer? And then you mentioned we didn't adopt a code. Why didn't we adopt this, this code? Is it because it's a far reaches of rural, kind of a rural code? And we just didn't think we would be going and needing that?
So, I'll answer your second question first. So, we didn't feel a need at this time to adopt the Wildland Urban Interface Code simply because the state's already adopted it? So, we have to enforce what the state hasn't opted. So, whenever a development comes in in a high, moderate high-hazard wildland urban interface, they have to build per the state's adoption anyway. So, so that's the reason why we didn't specifically adopt it. We have to enforce it anyway because of state law. To answer your second question, if density requires more in the sense of firefighting? Yes, in a sense. I mean, there's positives and negatives. The positive would be you're bringing water into a development. So, you have hydrants, and you have access roads. But on the other end, now we're protecting houses. So, we have more structures that we protect that are in the Wildland Urban Interface, whereas before, it's simply brush. And so, there's positives and negatives to that.
Okay. Well, I mean, the determination for me is, does it go in unincorporated landscape, which has more units? Or does it go in incorporated landscape, or fewer units in unincorporated landscape versus incorporated landscape where, you know, you have more people in that area? I guess, if I, if I could be indulged on factor number six, let's see, I think it's eight.
Councilmember Brekis, I'm going to yield my, I'm going to yield my time to you because I haven't used all my time. And so, I'm going to give you the time that I would have otherwise used because I know that you're very knowledgeable in this area.
Okay. So, the community, number five is the community goals that would be met by the proposed annexation. And there's a reference to a master plan policy, 2.1D here. And I have 2.1D opened up on my desk here. And it says, "Pursue or consider requests for annexation that, one is submit a concurrent request to change, to change to desired master plan land uses." Is this a request that has that?
It does not.
Okay. And then, this would be the factors where we would look at other master plan policies, correct? I mean, this is, or number 10, where it's other factors considered by the council, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, I guess along the question I had about planned regional growth, there's two policies that I've had questions for. And that's IMP hyphen 2.4A, periodically monitor the city's land supply in relation to goals and policies of the master plan. Make publicly available an inventory of developable employment and residential land by type within the city's sphere of influence. Have we done that, any of this work, and produced any documents relevant to this since we adopted the master plan in, I think it was January of 2020? I think it was January of twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen?
Not to my knowledge. And Nathan, um, let me just add, add you to this conversation. You've been here longer than me. Are you aware that we, the city has done that?
No, to my knowledge, that's, uh, an outstanding implementation item.
Okay. So we don't have any more new data on the need for this one. And then what about IMP hyphen two-point-one-E? Update the city's twenty-ten to twenty-seventeen annexation program. Have we updated our annexation program where we collaboratively, um, the council lays out properties by parcel number that we want to annex?
We have not. The last time we updated our annexation program was in twenty-ten.
Okay. So the council has not identified this as a property for annexation, but they have a statutory right to ask outside of the annexation program, correct?
Correct. Because there's the, the two types of annexation, city-initiated annexation and voluntarily annexing. Um, so this is not a city-initiated annexation, so it doesn't have to follow the annexation program that has expired. This is a, um, a volunteer, uh, annexation request.
Okay. Now, was this in a prior annexation program at one point in time?
And we've, we are, and, and it's tough right now because we don't have access to files because things are off-site with COVID. But, um, in, in talking to staff prior to the twenty-ten annexation program, my understanding that this parcel was included as part of the city-initiated annexation program. And then in the twenty-ten program, um, the focus was more, um, this, this was taken out. And I, I believe the focus was more towards the, the TODs and the infill areas. And so this property, um, did not fall within kind of those general limits. And so it was taking out, taken out of the city-initiated program.
Okay. I mean, I'm just using that as consideration of other factors. Number 10 is, um, is it something that we have any policy of wanting to annex and seeing the need and, um, not having it in our annexation program? Knowing that it was at one point and was dropped out, to me, is a historical, um, commentary on past policy. So thank you, and thank you for, uh, yielding your time to me, um.
Yes, sure. No problem. Okay. At this time, we're going to transition. Uh, Councilmember Doer, you have your last comment period.
Yeah, I'll just keep it to, yeah, one minute. I was going to save it, but I, I thought when you were speaking about the fires of Vice Mayor Reese, um, I just wanted to, to put it out there that a number of fires have started on this property, which have burned, um, houses that are in the city of Reno, including in my ward on Ridgeview, um, burned houses on Pioneer, um, Paul and Ranch Fire, um, and a number of others that have started on this property, whether due to lightning strikes, um, M V Energy Grid, um, Target Practice, whatever the cause. They've ended up impacting homes that are in Ward One and Ward Two and, um, and, and county homes that are in neither ward. Um, I wanted to just mention that. And the other concern I have about fires that I don't really think was highlighted here was the fact that the property is very long and does extend down to, uh, Lone Tree Lane. And down at that lane, again, I mentioned this unimproved, um, access point. And my concern is if a fire started in that part of our community, that would directly threaten, um, county lands and would be very hard to access. I mean, I don't see any way of dealing with this thousand acres without a significant amount of brush trucks, air support, um, and those kind of things. And again, I'm concerned that a number of the issues are not going to get resolved and that we are going to be responsible on the hook for quite a while for responding. So, uh, with that, I would like to hear what the public house to say.
Councilmember Doer, I'm sorry. I apologize. Was there a question?
Uh, it was more of a concern of the south end. I mean, I don't know if Trey is still on there, but maybe he can confirm. I mean, I'm just asking. It strikes me that you would need not just brush trucks, but probably air support just as they have fought other fires in this area. Um, and that access from the south to the, the part of the property that we identified to the south end. Where would we respond to that? Because I'm not aware of any Reno fire stations down there other than Station Twelve, which is in the Monte Ranch.
That is correct. So Station Twelve most likely would be our closest fire station, and it is pretty, uh, significantly far away from that location. And again, it is hard to, um, calculate the response time and how to get in there without any kind of roads or access to calculate that response time. Currently, we don't have any response. And so we have, uh, I, I understand the south side will be an entrance at whenever development is proposed, but without seeing that development, it's hard for us to give a proper answer to that question.
Right. But we have to make a decision now about annexation. And one of the key factors is, uh, about, uh, efficient and cost-effective provision of services. So we have to ask this question now. Um, the applicants declined to provide a master plan. I don't know where the access is. I only know the two access points they've identified. I know Station Twelve is pretty far away from Lone Tree Lane. So, thank you.
Thank you, uh, colleagues. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to our clerk as we work through, uh, inviting public commenters. We have a number of them. I want to just say for the record, um, that the public commenters will, uh, be coming online and being able to comment. They'll have, of course, three minutes. There isn't an opportunity for question and answer. And if folks could kind of identify where they are in the line, we'll have someone who's up, someone on deck, someone in the hole, that kind of thing. That way, we, we have two public commenters, so we won't have too many, uh, in, uh, on, or in the hole, I guess. So let's start off with that, and, and we'll work through that, and then we'll come back, uh, to the council.
Mr. Vice Mayor, at this time, transitioning to public comment for item C-three. As you indicated to our public commenters, they will be afforded three minutes to present their information. We remind commenters to please address the council as a whole and be respectful and mindful of decorum while giving their comments. First to speak is Bob Legoy Jr., followed by Arnie Hamala. At this time, Mr. Legoy, we will take you off of mute on our end. We can see your video, and you may proceed with your comments.
Yes. Thank you very much for, uh, letting me speak. Um, my name's Bob Legoy. I'm a lawyer in Reno with the law firm, Amalfi Cox and Goy. And we represent the limited liability company that manages the Pines Properties, which are the six-hundred-and-eleven acres just to the west of the Evans Creek property. Uh, Angela showed you the Pines property on the map earlier in her presentation. Now, that Pines property is sixteen different parcels, six-hundred-and-eleven acres. And I believe it has a, an approved planning unit development for two-hundred-and-fifty-one lots. And it's annexed into the city. And it's owned by about fifty different people, most of whom are Reno residents. And, uh, we favor the annexation of the Evans Creek property into Reno. And the only reason I'm here today is to tell you that, as, as the property goes through the approval process, we want you to coordinate that process with the Pines properties. For example, when you approved the P U D for the Pines, one of the lots has an easement from the end of a roadway to the border of the Evans Creek. That was, that's, the, the, the city did that, so with the expectation that someday, uh, there would be another access point to the Pines properties through Evans Creek. And there would be another access point for the, um, Evans Creek properties through the Pines. Also, there are hiking trails and horse trails that cross both properties. So we respectfully request that as the planning, uh, moves forward for the Evans Creek property, that you keep the Pines in mind and try to coordinate the roadways, utilities, even the hiking and horse trails. And I appreciate your attention, and I appreciate all your efforts, uh, with respect to this very big and important issue for the city of Reno. Both the Pines and Evans Creek should be crown jewels of this town. They're spectacular pieces of property, and I know the homesites on the Pines are all spectacular. And I believe that the homesites on the Evans Creek will also be spectacular. Does anyone have any questions of me?
No, Mr. Legoy, but I just want to thank you for your years of service, uh, to the bar and appreciate your being here today. Always a privilege to have another member of the bar in chambers. Thank you very much for your comments, and I'll transition back to our clerk.
That's the nicest thing anybody's going to say to me today. Thank you very much.
Mr. Vice Mayor, with that, transitioning to our other public comment from Arnie Hamala. At this time, we have unmuted you on our end, and you may begin your comments.
Can you hear me now? Hello?
Yes, we're here, Mr. Hamala. Yes, we're getting a little bit of reverb, but we can hear you loud and clear.
Very good. Uh, I'm not opposed to the annexation per se. When it's time to develop, it should be developed in the city of Reno for sure. But I am opposed to the establishment of an unrealistic entitlement expectation by going from county general rural to city SF fifteen-thousand, fifteen. Uh, if you look at the southeast corner of Section Thirty-four, like I have, you'll discover that forty percent of that forty acres is about thirty percent slope or greater. The flat land in that section is mostly a mesa on top of, um, the valleys. And that's where two reaches of Evans Creek come together. So the suggest of that forty acres is SF fifteen is unrealistic. Now, I'm aware that you have a master plan designation, and planners like to have zoning consistent with the master plan. But in the case at hand, it really doesn't make any practical sense. And I'm afraid that the SF fifteen zoning will be the unit count that the developer will want to go forward with, and that'll be the, the basement from which, uh, he can't descend in terms of the number of units. My, my other concern is, uh, is a technical one. Uh, what if he doesn't want to do a planned development? What if he wants to go, using the SF fifteen zoning, go directly to subdivision maps? I'd like to ask staff, is that a possibility? Could he lot out Evans Creek? Could he lot out the steep slopes? And by simply conforming with, uh, your subdivision requirements? Thank you. And I do, do also thank you for your service. I know how tough this is. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Vice Mayor, with that, it should be noted that we have no further pre-registered public comment at this time.
Okay, Madam Clerk, public comment therefore is now closed. Uh, any, uh, further discussion from the members? Councilmember Doer.
Yeah, I just wanted to, to note that in the staff report, too, I want to get this confirmed by Angela or Nathan, it was noted that this property was what was called Tier Two in the new regional plan. Uh, the regional plan was adopted, I don't know, a year ago. And what that means is that they expect low to moderate density housing. It's third in priority and in investment hierarchy. So the whole purpose of, we spent years on this. I'm vice chair of, uh, this group at this point of the Regional Planning Agency. And, um, the whole idea with the regional plan was to have some kind of, um, thoughtful approach to development and, um, and in where we place our investment dollars. And this was, uh, clearly in Tier Two, still is. Um, there's a Tier Zero, there's a Tier One. Zero's pretty much downtown. Tier One is next. So one of my concerns and the question I have for Angela and, um, Nathan is just, how, how do you evaluate that? You know, in terms of timing, because the whole question here is timing. Is this right? Do we have a need for this housing? Are we prepared to make the infrastructure and investment? Can we provide services? Those are some of the key questions.
Yep. And maybe I'll start with that. Um, so in that Tier Two, that is areas identified for future growth within the next twenty years.
Right.
Again, based on proximity to utilities and infrastructure. So the, the, the Tier One would be the areas such as our, our downtown, our infill areas that we already have existing developments. And that Tier Two is that, that next level. So while there's not a specific timing associated with that of when that comes forward or when that's developed, um, that Tier Two is basically within the next twenty years. That is an area for, anticipated for growth and development.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I don't know if there are any other council members that have questions.
I don't believe so at this time, Councilmember Doer.
Okay. Um, I, I guess since it's, uh, this area appears according to the staff report to be potentially split between my Ward Two and Ward One, I will, uh, attempt to take a stab at a motion. And I would invite my colleague from Ward One, um, to add anything to that motion if she agrees with it. Um, we are being asked today, uh, whether we would, um, uh, based on the evaluation of the ten ex- annexation criteria in the Reno Municipal Code, uh, whether we are prepared to annex this property. And, um, I would, um, recommend that we not annex this property at this time for a number of reasons. Um, we've put some of them on the record today, but just to recap, um, I'm concerned about, uh, sufficient legal access. Uh, I'm concerned about the type of housing stock that is, uh, indicated by the zoning that would be coming in. I'm concerned about the fact that this sits in Tier Two, and it's not a priority for investment of infrastructure, um, at this time. Uh, we have thousands of homes approved already. And we just heard from one, uh, commenter that they have up six-hundred acres nearby in the same area approved, annexed, and more ready to go. Um, we have concerns, uh, established through this discussion about fire access, both in the north and the south, and, um, the fact that this is in a high hazard fire area. Um, I have raised concerns about the planning for the water and sewer service and concern that that will not be timely resolved. And this would, if we annex today, would sit on our, uh, responsibility until those issues are resolved. Um, and then, um, in terms of other factors, um, our master plan specifically indicates that we should be, um, looking for a master plan from this developer. And while it's not required, um, this is a discretionary approval. Um, I don't have the confidence and, um, knowledge about really what is planned here in order to be able to move forward. Um, there's no slope analysis. Um, there's not apparently a, a realistic number of homes that the staff or the applicant would even kind of circle in on. So for those and probably other reasons, um, that perhaps others would want to articulate, I, I do not, uh, think that this property meets the criteria at this time to be annexed into the city of Reno.
Second.
This is Councilmember Breckus. I would like the official record of notice of denial, um, to also include some of the criteria findings that I'm unable to make. And so I'm going to ask the clerk when she issues that in the body to incorporate these as the official record of finding. Criteria one and two do not support the annexation request. As the property involves four large parcels that neighbor both suburban-style development that is of the character both in the city of Reno and in unincorporated Washoe County. But it also includes lands of natural terrain that are both a publicly owned land and, and then large lot semi-rural development in unincorporated Washoe County. These adjacency considerations lead the council to find that the properties are not suitable for incorporation. And they're also in the Tier Two, uh, regional plan designation. I'd like to also include in the record that Criteria Three is not supported as the most relevant city documents related to land's supply need, um, for the housing demand technical analysis to the master plan indicate an oversupply of lands of these types of densities based upon the conversion factor of annexation. Also, on Sub E of Criteria Three, the mixture and uses, um, and types of, uh, lands that are proposed do not match those of city need. I also believe that Criteria Five is not met by this request because it was not accompanied by a concurrent master plan res- request for consideration. And also, the Foothill Neighborhood, uh, designation in the Reno master plan, um, does not, um, this request does not match that typology of large planned, that contemplates large planned community developments. Um, I also believe that Criteria Six is not met, related to the cost-effective provision of fire resources, as this has been indicated through the testimony of our fire marshal to be a high hazard area where Reno may have, not have adequate, uh, capital facilities to respond to. Um, and that it's a threat, a danger to, um, residential, um, residences and residential, um, uh, property. And also, I believe that under other considerations, factors, that as this is not a property indicated in our annexation plan... in our annexation plan, as contemplated in policy IMP-2.1E, it's not suitable for annexation at this time. It should be as a self-initiated annexation. It is one of significant magnitude and implication to the city in its responses and services, and coming through as a self-directed annexation does not have the, in the view of the council, the forward planning that we need to do when we adopt properties into our annexation program to bring those in within the seven-year timeframe.
Thank you, Councilmember Breckis. The record will so reflect.
Right, thank you.
Sounds like the motion maker has incorporated those things. My second remains the same. Is there any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion by Councilmember Doer, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Vice Mayor, with that, transitioning to Item C4. This is a request for abandonment for 1214 West First Street.
Okay, let the record reflect that the city council is opening a public hearing on Item C4. Madam Clerk, was proper notice given? Any correspondence received?
Mr. Vice Mayor, proper notice was given. We received online public comment and support from Lane Knack. This has been submitted to council and is part of the record.
Thank you. I appreciate having read it. I appreciate your calling it out. Do any council members need to make any disclosures at this time? Hearing none, I'll move towards the question as to whether or not the council desires a staff presentation. I didn't believe so. Is the applicant present or wishes to make a presentation? No. Okay. Any questions for the staff from council? Okay, I'll turn to Councilmember Breckis. This is in Ward 1. Can you make a motion, please?
I move to order the abandonment.
You have a motion by Councilmember Breckis.
Second, Doer.
And a second by Councilmember Doer. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Vice Mayor, transitioning to Item C5.1. This is Reignite Reno, resolution of the council amending the current moratorium for alcoholic beverage package licenses.
Okay, let the record reflect that the city council is opening the public hearing on Item C5.1. Madam Clerk, was proper notice given? Any correspondence received?
Mr. Vice Mayor, proper notice was given. We received one letter of support from Ashley Johnson on behalf of Local Beer Works. That has been submitted to council and is part of the record.
Thank you, and I saw Ms. Johnson's letter and unique request. Any council members need to make any disclosures at this time? Councilmember Breckis.
Yeah, I just, you know, I support a revision to our packaged liquor sales. I think this came up many years ago with a license request up in the northwest portion of Ward 1, and I have supported it, but I'm very uncomfortable that we're moving into a second year of this moratorium, and then within that, we're doing exceptions for certain people. I think the longer this goes in, the more it looks like it is an ordinance that is directed at a typology of a few, and I think those are just your standalone liquor sales. And so I think that we need to think very carefully about this. We're actually liberalizing packaged liquor right now when we're in the process of designing regulations to restrict packaged liquor. So I would encourage the council to completely not, to repeal the moratorium and let staff move forward with the ordinance making, but not put this noosehold of limbo on just these few little liquor stores that have been trying to see the clarity we're getting and make their own liquor sales. So I'm not going to support the exception, but it's because I don't believe in the moratorium rule. I would like the council to throw out the whole moratorium, and then that would allow these people who are in the exception to do the activity they want to do. I think we're really in tough ground on segment, on directing our regulations to a small minority of packaged liquor business sales types. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Breckis. And I'm going to go to council, I'm sorry, to Mr. Stockham to see if there's any brief presentation that wanted to be made. I apologize, we sort of got out of order there, and I know Councilmember Jordan has comments as well, but can we first start with Mr. Stockham and keep your comments brief if possible?
Yes, hi, Arlo Stockham, Acting Assistant Manager, for the record. I have a very short PowerPoint, but I'm not sure we need it. Really, this is adding one exception to the package alcohol moratorium, and that's for package alcohol sales in conjunction with existing restaurants and bars that have an onsite alcohol license and only outside the downtown cap area. So it's pretty targeted. It's included in our Reignite Reno program, and the real intent is to help existing businesses make it through the COVID crisis, and this is in some small measure a way to do that. Happy to answer any additional questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stockham. Hold on, Ms. Breckis. I'm going to go to Councilmember Jordan, but before I do that, I thank you, Mr. Stockham, for the work that went into this. I know that the Reignite Reno has allowed us the opportunity to be both innovative and flexible, and that's what I have appreciated about the policy. I thank your staff for all the work that they've done because it has been an incredibly difficult and complex lift, and so I'm in favor of the staff recommendations, but I'll go now to Councilmember Jordan, and then Councilmember Delgado, and then we'll circle back to you, Councilmember Breckis. Councilmember Jordan, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. I too just wanted to compliment staff on working so nimbly and quickly to help support our ever-struggling businesses, and certainly the ones that you're speaking of today are those that have been impacted significantly. Some of the actions we've taken at the city of Reno, I've heard a lot of feedback and appreciation that we as government, which can be rather stagnant or stiff, has really shown during this crisis that we can be flexible and responsive and move quickly in order to give our small businesses a fighting chance. And to me, this is just another component of that, and I am in favor of that.
Thank you, Councilmember Delgado.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I appreciate it, and I appreciate my colleagues on this, and I appreciate all the staff's hard work on, again, being nimble, creative, and innovative during this time for a lot of our businesses. I just want to reiterate that the reasoning why we even have a moratorium in place, and not to forget about the long-term benefits that we want to make sure that our communities benefit from, and that's to make sure that the proper places are being sold in terms of our communities that are being impacted from improper packaged liquor sales and permitting. So I don't want us to lose sight of that and the hard work that goes behind all of that. I know right now is, of course, a different time, and I appreciate the creativity to allow for that, but let us not forget the long game here in terms of making sure that our communities, there's equity to place in our communities in terms of proper liquor sales. So I appreciate and support of staff's recommendation, and look forward to diving into a little bit more details as we start to come out of the post-COVID in terms of making sure that there are proper restrictions and permitting in place throughout our region. So thanks again to our staff, and I appreciate your guys' again creativity.
Thank you, Councilmember Breckis.
Thank you. If we did not have the moratorium on, would this exception be necessary?
No, there would be no need for an exception if there was no moratorium.
Okay. So as someone who's opposed the moratorium, because I think we're not moving with the speed that we ought to, and it's not, you know, an issue with you, you've got a big docket, and it's our job to prioritize that docket. But how about an update? Because I have been in communication with a number of people who have a vested interest in seeing what the new landscape's looking like, and they are feeling a little left behind, and their business opportunities have dissipated over this time. And I heard recently, last week, from one of these people.
Sure. Well, prior to COVID, we were moving towards having an ordinance ready for council consideration. We'd done some extensive outreach with all of our licensees, helped some public workshops, and had some draft ordinance language. Together, we were planning some additional workshops. No question, this topic is important and also controversial. There's been some legitimate longstanding concerns about public safety issues related to kind of a proliferation of small liquor stores. So we were moving towards probably being ready to adopt something by now, and then COVID turned our lives upside down, and given all the business shutdowns on the private sector side, everyone being forced to close and adopt various safety mechanisms, similarly at the staff level, getting redirected to other priorities, we brought forward an extension of the moratorium so the ordinance itself could be considered when we were not under a state of emergency, and we kind of saw what this did to the community, and that was passed. And that's what we are left with right now, where we have the moratorium in place till the end of the year. We are entering our reopening phases, so we anticipate being able to get started on this again before too long, but ultimately, these businesses are not able to operate, and this specific exemption wouldn't, these types of businesses, say a restaurant with an onsite alcohol license, they would not have been impacted by the draft ordinances. So they were kind of caught in a moratorium that's unlikely to affect them, so that's why we brought forward this targeted exception to help our existing businesses.
Thank you. Okay. Any other council members wish to make comment or have questions on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll move for, I'll move to adopt the resolution.
Second, Jordan.
Okay, I have a motion that I've made. Councilmember Jordan has seconded it, open to discussion. Councilmember Breckis, three minutes.
Thank you. I want to express appreciation to Mr. Stockham for that explanation, and while I have not supported the moratorium, I will support this exception. I just want to state that I think that moratoriums that lag in time, that have a lot of carve-outs, are ones that really are not of the best quality, and while I'm not an attorney able to opine on that, also put a body into a position of being a little arbitrary and not very consistent in its approach to moratoria. And so I just want to throw that out there, but I also appreciate the opportunity to elaborate upon the concern of the people who are not a part of this discussion right now, who have been in those public meetings, and I've, you know, looked in on some of those being held, because this exception is allowing some businesses to increase their activity, but there's a whole host of people who just want to know what the landscape is on this business operation, and they haven't even been able to have an exception because they can't, they've been stuck not being able to have business. And so I think that needs to be, that's something front and center to my mind, is us moving forward with this. So thank you. And I'll wait, I'm ready for the motion to vote.
Thank you. I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Vice Mayor, with that, transitioning to Item D11. Under Parks and Recreation, this is discussion from staff as relates to Reignite Reno. This time, we will transition our Parks and Rec director, Jamie Schroder, as a panelist. She has a brief presentation to give to council.
Let me also ask Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
Mr. Vice Mayor, we have no public comment for Item D1, nor do we have any preregistrants signed in for public comment.
Thank you. I'll note for the record, though, that Ms. Donna Klons did submit an email just in the last few minutes that is about, I believe, this agenda item potentially, I think. It's about Paradise Park, but we'll transition now to Ms. Schroder for a brief staff presentation.
At this time, Jamie, if you would like to unmute on your end, and we can transition to sharing the screen, and you may present your PowerPoint and progress slides from your computer if you'd like.
Great, thank you very much. Let me get this fired up and get the right screen off and running. And see. How's that? Everybody seeing the right screen? I have three monitors, so I want to make sure I'm sharing the right one.
Yes, we see the screen. It's the initial slide deck, and then let's see if it toggles when you want it to.
All right, fantastic. Okay. Here we go. So Parks and Recreation has definitely spent the last couple of months trying to prepare as much as possible for all the different scenarios and accommodate whatever COVID-19 measures will be in place based on what the state says, what CDC says, and what the District Health says. So we are following the Governor's State of Nevada phased reopening plan. It's very important for me to make sure I get this out on the public record, that everything I'm presenting today is subject to change based on our budget situation and the ability to meet all of the COVID-19 requirements. I think we can all see that when we had the shutdown, that parks were definitely crucial for everyone's public health and helped create some sense of normalcy for us during this unprecedented time. I definitely want to make sure that I state that we really need everyone's patience and cooperation as we figure out what this new normal is going to look like. Business will not be as usual this summer for us. We are going to have to do some significant modifications to our programs. And then last but not least, a reminder for everyone to please recreate responsibly, and, you know, we'll get through this together, and cooperation is definitely a vital component to that. So this is the State of Nevada phased reopening plan. I've summarized it as simply as I could with some of the basic components that we know we need to follow. So Phase 1 is started in May 9, and it goes to essentially current, but it looks like on Friday from the governor's announcements last night that we can begin to enter into Phase 2 on May 29. With that, we need to keep our D. Phase 3 is obviously to be determined, and then Phase 4 will be to be determined as well. The one thing that I do need to mention is that even though the governor has said that we can go into Phase 2 starting on Friday, our park and pickleball courts are open. There are 34 miles of trails that are available for use and 1,700 acres of open space. I do want to take a minute to specifically call out our invisible heroes, our Parks Division team, that have proven that they are in fact essential employees, and they've been dedicated to maintaining our parks. We've seen a significant increase in users using our parks, which then means we're doing a good job of picking up the trash and cleaning the restrooms and doing any repairs that need to be done. So Phase 2, it's going to be a little confusing on this slide, but we know that for the majority of the recreational operations of our department, June 8 will be the earliest we can start to reopen. However, in parks, because parks are already open, the plan is to open the outdoor sports courts and skate parks on May 29. Athletics fields for youth sports are still up in the air. The governor's comments last night mentioned that he would like to be able to move forward with figuring out some level of youth sports that can happen, but there's still some research and discussion that needs to be done, so I've put it on here for Phase 2, but we don't have a specific start date for that. Next, we're going to look at opening Evelyn Mount Northeast Community Center. Given all the COVID-19 restrictions, Vacation Station will be the only program that we have open at Evelyn Mount Northeast Community Center. We will have to do a reduced enrollment. We will not be able to do field trips or swimming at this time. We anticipate that will change as we go into Phase 3 and then be back to normal operations in Phase 4. When we open Evelyn Mount, we definitely will need to open our front desk operations as well. That is our main hub for customer service for all the customers to call for registration and questions, and then we will be doing adaptive equipment rental by appointment only. Well, Ms. Jim? Plumus Gym will also open, as that is our second Vacation Station camp. Same situation there. It will have to be reduced enrollment so that we can meet the spacing requirements for social distancing. We will also be able to open Neil Road Recreation Center. That will be modified for operations. Again, we have to follow that reduced capacity. And then, the Governor's orders last night also said that locker rooms need to remain closed. About a week after June 15th, we are hoping to reopen McKinley Arts and Culture Center, but it would be more specific to the existing tenants that are in that building and the arts and culture and special event staff that work out of that building. The main program that will be there, that the city operates, will be Vacation Station. We're not planning to start that until a week later on June 15th, because we need to figure out what tweaks will need to be made as we get through the first week of Vacation Station at Plumus Gym and Evelyn Mount Northeast Community Center. And then, the last elements for Phase 2 will be our pools. So, Northwest Pool and Idiwild Pool will both open June 8th. We have enough staff on hand to be able to open both of those locations. Due to all the COVID-19 requirements, our plan is to only do lap swim and water fitness classes at Northwest Pool. The locker rooms will be closed at both facilities, so swimmers will need to come ready to swim. We are going to have to require pre-registration, so no drop-in for lap swim and water fitness classes. And then, for Idiwild Pool, it will just be lap swim only. And as soon as we get some final information from the Health District, we will then start to release information on how swimmers would be able to sign up and reserve their lane time for lap swim. We do have to do reduced numbers of swimmers in each lane in order to adhere to the social Phase 3, we do not have a start date for, but we anticipate in parks being able to open the playgrounds, the splash pads, additional restrictions being lifted on athletic fields, renting of shelters, and then hopefully opening the Idiwild Train for adult athletics programming. We intend to be able to offer our softball and kickball leagues, which are very popular, and they fill up every summer. Evelyn Mount will still continue to be only open for Vacation Station. We do have some construction going on right now. Hopefully, that will be resolved by mid to end of July, which will then allow us to be able to open up more services at Evelyn Mount Northeast Community Center. Plumus Gym will remain with Vacation Station only, and McKinley Arts and Culture Center will remain as is during Phase 3. Neil Road Recreation Center, Northwest Pool and Idiwild Pool, I'm sorry, Northwest Pool will mostly stay the same. Idiwild Pool, we should be able to start offering open swim in Phase 3 in a limited capacity, as well as hopefully to be able to open Trainer Pool. The one, I guess, element that we need to be aware of before we can truly make the decision on whether or not to open Trainer Pool will be that timing or when Phase 3 can occur. We have to make sure that we are being fiscally responsible, and if for some reason Phase 3 does not happen until the end of July, it may not be worth the financial expense that it would be to drain that pool, balance it, fill it back up with water, and reopen it. So, we're going to have to watch that very carefully before we can make that call on Trainer Pool, but we certainly hope that we would be able to open Trainer Pool. And then, when we get to Phase 4, the plan is to resume all of our normal operations. And then, of course, with the caveat, it would be pending any budget cuts since we head into the new fiscal year. But this is the list of everything that would be open by the time we get to Phase 4. That is all I have. I'm ready for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Schroder. Can I just start with asking about one that I don't think was on the slides, and I apologize, but Paradise Park is one of our facilities that is used heavily by our senior community, and I know that we're making certain that we haven't left our seniors out of the discussion. What is the idea or thought behind Paradise Park? Is that in Phase 3? Where do you see that going?
Given that the Governor's direction right now was still to make sure that we protect our most vulnerable population if they need to continue to shelter in place, we currently have Paradise Park Activity Center in Phase 4.
4, okay. And that is because of their vulnerable situation, is that correct?
Correct. If, if that changes in Phase 3, we will move that up earlier in the operations to open, but for right now, we want to make sure we're protecting our vulnerable population.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Any other council members have questions for Ms. Schroder at this time? Okay, seeing none, I don't believe this is stylized for action, so I just want to turn to Madam Clerk. And I understood it was just a presentation, is that correct?
Mr. Vice Mayor, you are styled for action. However, I am not sure that any is needed at this time. I will defer to Ms. Schroder if she's seeking additional direction, but I believe at this point, this is more informational for council.
No problem. It looks like Councilmember Breck is, I apologize, I didn't see you there, so I'll come to you now. Councilmember Breck, the floor is yours.
Could you go up to your earlier slides, Ms. Schroder, and tell us what's the next, what's the first thing to open in terms of buildings?
So, in terms of buildings, what we're looking at opening on Monday, June 8th, will be Evelyn Mount Northeast Community Center and Plumus Gym, Neil Road Recreation Center, and then, a week later, we will follow that with McKinley Arts and Culture Center.
Has the Plumus Gym air conditioning been put into place yet? Is that project done?
No, unfortunately not. That project is on hold, pending what the financial situation of the city will be.
Yeah, you know, I'm sorry, I have heard from too many people that the Plumus Gym situation, and really, your own staff, is if we're going to open it this summer, we got to have that AC in. And I'm not comfortable being the Ward 1 resident and I would, or member, you know, council member, and I would presume that a lot of the people who come, I know it's open to everyone in the city, but from that area, and I'm just, I'm sorry, if that project isn't going, I'm not comfortable with us having people in that building. That's what I've been told, that we're not going to open it up if we got that air C in. So, that makes me particularly uncomfortable. It's not necessarily COVID-related, but I want to express my concern, and I'm someone who's lived without air conditioning in Reno for nearly 20 years, and I can tell you, it's getting tough, and I have heard that it's very tough in that Plumus Gym. I also want to ask you a little bit about what you're hearing from our employees, who, are they expressing safety concerns about being called back to work? And also, from parents, are they expressing safety concerns about putting their children in these kind of closed, combined areas, particularly with Plumus Gym, where we don't have good air circulation?
So, I will speak to the Plumus Gym project first. So, yes, it does get hot in there. We did make some significant modifications to Plumus Gym last summer. There are two classrooms on the side of each side of the gym, and those do have air conditioning units. And then, we have portable units that we bring inside to the main gym area at Plumus as well. And they help, but obviously, it's not the same as having true today's technology of HVAC system. That project is still in need, and obviously, it's still of high importance to Parks and Recreation. As far as staff goes with concerns, you know, as we get, as we stay in communication with them, oh, I have some good news. I actually just received a message that Plumus Gym is going to be proceeding. I don't think that we have enough time to be able to get that project done before the summer, but it sounds like it's very positive that we will have this ready to go by next summer. So, then, going back to what staff questions are and concerns about their, you know, their own safety, our team has definitely researched every piece of information we can get to make sure that we are providing a safe environment, not only for our staff, but as well as for our participants. So, they will all undergo COVID-19 training before we actually open our doors to our customers. That's part of the reason why we need the extra week to prepare. They're all being provided with face coverings, and then, we will have hand sanitizer. We have disinfecting solutions to be able to clean on a regular basis. We're doing temperature checks. Parents will not be allowed inside the building. The kids will be dropped off at the parking lot and then brought into the building by staff. The kids will all be kept in the same group for as much of the duration of the camps as possible, so that we're going to limit any cross-exposure. Typically, we will take the age groups and split them up by age, but knowing that we want to try to adhere to COVID-19 guidelines, we will likely allow siblings to stay in the same group, so that, again, it limits different contact and exposure. We'll be doing a lot of things outdoors, which certainly reduces exposure as well. And then, as far as parents being concerned, we haven't had much contact as far as what are you doing in order to provide a safe environment? The questions really have been more, when can I sign my children up for the camp?
Thank you, Ms. Schroder. Can I go to Councilmember Jordan?
Thank you very much. And I understand the camps and the need and the desire for those. I guess my question is, when we talk about the pools and standing them up and opening them up and staffing them for a very limited capacity, in the full context of what we're looking at with our budget, and I'm going to go back to my comments earlier about our impending budget situation, are we, I mean, are we just, with a very limited access, are we just going to be digging ourselves into a deeper financial hole, not satisfying the larger group of users? I mean, kids that can't just free swim and only those that can lap swim, I don't know. I guess my question is, are we able to get to a point of break-even on a limited usage lap swim with the staffing required for that? And I know, we're not a normal business, that's not what we normally do, but these aren't normal times, and we've got some very significant decisions that we're going to have to be making, and I don't want to keep digging. And I'm afraid this scenario is keeping us digging.
I definitely understand, you know, those comments. The one thing about aquatics, as far as expenses that are scalable, would be that it takes far fewer staff to provide appropriate staffing ratios to be able to do lap swim, the swim teams, as well as our water fitness classes. Once we start to head into Phase 3, where we can do some open swim, that's where it will require a few more lifeguards, because we do have that staffing ratio that we need to maintain. So, it is scalable, and I can certainly continue to have the conversations with the finance director, but as of this time, you know, we're trying to be as fiscally as responsible and still provide those recreational services.
So, two questions then. So, the staffing required for the lap swim, those are personnel that are already on payroll and being paid now?
For the most part, yes. We will be bringing back some of our temporary part-time staff, just because of the fact that it is a hot, human environment, so you have to make sure you're able to rotate through. And then, our pool hours will be beyond the normal 8 to 5. We stagger our staff as much as possible, but there will be some temporary part-time salaries needed.
Okay, so there is going to be some additional. And then, if we are concerned about a senior demographic with Paradise Park, are we not similarly concerned with a senior demographic for lap swim, or is that not the makeup of the lap swim?
Both, if you will. So, typically, the one, the seniors that are coming to do our lap swim are usually more active and potentially in a better health situation, because the fact that lap swim does require a different fitness level. The same thing for our water fitness classes. That is a little bit easier to control in the sense that, you know, we are only limiting three people per lane, they have to start at opposite ends, so we feel pretty comfortable with the, you know, adhering to the CDC guidelines to allow that to happen at a pool.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other colleagues have questions on this presentation at this time? Councilmember Breck?
I mean, I think, I think this, I understand this has been phrased as a, you know, as a report and not necessarily for action, but I think, you know, as this program's designed, it says "subject to change." I think that hopefully, the manager is listening, and then, oh, well, we'll put people outside. If we have a hot summer, that's going to be very hard, and I've, I've been hearing for years how difficult it is over there. So, I want to reemphasize that. But second, with the other childcare programs have been stood up, because none are, none are stood up right now, and, you know, the schools are closed. And I just, I, I'm concerned that the burden on the staff of social distancing that population, which is young, is going to be pretty high, and possibly ones they're not quite as equipped to manage as, say, you know, someone with a teaching license for kindergartners. And we're putting our toe in before the schools or other people, and I know it's critical to a lot of families, but I'm concerned that it's a job that we're going to have challenges with, and we're not the best to, you know, do that. I'd like to see the schools be open and learn, the world learning from how the schools social distance children in those communal settings, rather than the city of Reno and our staycations this summer. That's, that's my view, and I feel pretty strongly about that, I think, because it seems like a very novel approach that we're, we're doing locally and maybe even regionally. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Breck. Ms. Schroder?
If I may interject real quick, I've been corrected on the Plumus Gym HVAC system. So, it was always slated for the fall of fiscal year 2021, so I just want to make sure that that's on the record, that I was wrong about it having been put into place before this summer. So, it's a, it's a next-year project, so just want to be clear about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll close this item out. D1 is closed, and move on to D2. This item is, I think, also a brief presentation, if required, if requested by the body. Do any of the council colleagues desire a staff presentation on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll look for a motion, please. Oh, Councilmember?
I do. I, I have a question about this program.
Okay, let's, let you take the floor. Thank you.
I mean, it seems to be a kind of a come-in, ask you to use the property however you want, and, I mean, we have a property disposal policy, and that's why I supported this request to sell a piece of property last weekend, or last meeting, because we had, our policy has a joiner interest, and it seems like this project, the way it's designed, is for a joiner interest, but not necessarily a joiners. But I, I think it's covered under other policies that we worked very hard on. And also, the last group that came forward wanting to use a piece of property was the generator. We had a very involved lease, and then that went away. So, I, I just, I don't know. I mean, are you going to, I, I'm more concerned about staff resources, to be frank. I want the Economic Development Department to be very concise in what they're doing, and I don't think we've had a discussion on our economic development strategies to meet the times. I mean, I think it's a novel approach, but I don't really see it as highly additive. Is there one property that maybe we could test drive this on, of someone who wants something, for example?
Thank you. Mr. Vice Mayor, if I may respond?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Eric Jensen, Grant and Fund Development Manager. Last fall, former manager Newby challenged the staff to come up with ways to be more efficient, to save the city money, and to also possibly generate new revenue. So, this was something that I was working with, from a, with Brooke Oswald in Community Development, and with Jeff Limperd, and essentially, the concept is something that we're already doing. We already have all the policies and everything in place. It's just that right now, we are reactive instead of proactive in how we do this. So, in other words, we just sit and wait till somebody comes in and suggests a use for a property. This concept would make it a, turn a reactive program into a proactive program, and essentially, what it would say is- And essentially, what it would say is, within a certain defined area that we've kind of set as the downtown action plan boundaries, we would actually talk to city personnel, perhaps the folks in Public Works who actually go out and maintain these properties, who cut the weeds, who pick up the garbage, who do all these things and say, hey, are there pieces of ground out there that are remnants, not entire parcels, not, not something we can sell, that are possibly parts of a right-of-way, that are part of another facility, that are simply not being used, but we're expending resources to maintain? And is there somebody out there who might want to use it and who'd be willing to maintain it and put it to a beneficial use without selling it? Because we may need it in the future. So for example, we, the one that, the first one that came to mind was the property on the east side, oh, sorry, North Wells, east side of the overpass there. This particular planner came to me and said, hey, Eric, they're developing a project next to it. There's about a 50-foot wide, 40-foot wide piece of ground there between the viaduct and the property that's just weeds. And our Public Works folks go out there and cut them periodically. And there's a fence around it. And then there's a space under the overpass there that's just full of garbage that we have to go clean out. What if somebody else was willing to use that space and take care of it for us so that we could then send our Public Works guys out to do more productive things, such as helping to maintain parks or taking care of other facilities that need the attention instead of cutting weeds on a vacant piece of ground next to this overpass? So that's where this came about. So it essentially was a challenge from former manager Newby to find new creative ways to save the city money and resources. And so that's kind of what we're looking at here is this idea, we can use the collective brain power of the community to help us and share with us where these areas are that aren't necessarily being used, but we're expending city resources to maintain. And is there somebody who would like to use it and maintain it for us so that we can use those resources on some other project that's more important to us? So that's this in a nutshell.
Thank you. Any additional questions by council? Hearing none, I'll move to approve staff recommendations.
Second, Weber.
Okay, I have a motion that I've made, seconded by Councilmember Weber. Any additional questions at this time? Councilmember Dewar?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I understand. When Mr. Jensen mentioned soliciting proposals versus waiting for them to come in. So do we already have proposals that are pending that people have requested to use these lands?
Not necessarily, again, Eric Jensen, excuse me, not necessarily. And so, and we don't even know where they all are, to be honest, because a lot of these are rights-of-way and so they're not listed in a property list. You know, we have a multi-page disposal property list that we get every year that we review. But some of these are rights-of-way. And so, but we can't sell them. We can't lease them, you know? But we could assign them to somebody to maintain and use until we need them to either repair the bridge or to do whatever. And a prime example is underneath the north side of the Vine Street overpass. So in my report, I showed a picture of the south side. On the north side, there's actually cars parking under it right now. Somebody back in the past just paved underneath it for, you know, to cut down on the weeds. And neighbors and local business people park under the overpass. I'm assuming for weather and sun protection. And so there are people that are already doing this. People in the community are already seeing these vacant spaces and utilizing them. This would be a way to formalize it and to grow it.
Okay, well, on that one in particular, just a cautionary note. That is in like the 20-year floodplain. It's going to get, I don't want us to have liability for people parking there or using that area. We made it really clear when we did the deal with the generator. That bridge, that whole area was slated to go away. And there's supposed to be a pedestrian bridge to west of that bridge for pedestrians. So I just, when we, when we look at these, just because someone wants to use it doesn't mean we should do it.
Right, absolutely.
I just, just a cautionary note. I don't want, because it's a right-of-way or whatever, I don't want the city being at risk in any of these deals. Even, you know, I think we have to, not just balance it, but especially in these areas that are clearly going to be in a need. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Jensen, so that you understand, I see this as essentially another type of reignite Reno initiative. I just see it as a creative way to see if there is a way that we can help other businesses. Now, they may come to us with a request and we may not ultimately approve it. You may decide that it is not viable or is not a good location. I just want to see if we can help any additional business owners utilize their space. It may be for dining tables, for their restaurant. It may be for a veterinary clinic to walk dogs on. I don't know. But I'm just saying, it's another additional tool in the toolbox. I appreciate the White Paper's position and I'll leave it at that. Councilmember Breckus?
Yeah, I mean, I gotta say, you know, we're going into probably the most significant economic times in 100 years. And we have the resources currently of two people to do economic development for the city of Reno. When we did our master plan, we said we were going to have an economic development strategy and plan to differentiate what we do compared to Edon. And I think we can work complementary. And also, the governor's office, we have a new governor, is redoing his economic development plan. I think we need to task our economic development staff very precisely on a strategy. And I don't think this is it. I think this essentially puts our economic development team to be glorified leasing agents. And I just, I think the issues are much bigger, much larger. And staff needs to be proposing those to us. Not really enamored with this concept. And also, I will say, some of the, some of the deals we've made in the downtown area on our own property, for example, the St. Thomas Aquinas Church is very concerned that the public parking lot across the street from them has been sent over to Mr. Jacobs, who's doing, I don't know, selling it to someone else. Also, the property on Keystone Avenue that we recently sold to someone, he's got another sale sign on it. I think that, you know, we're not doing well on sale of property downtown. And now we're going to be leasing other areas? I just, I think we have other mechanisms to address these right-of-ways that are maybe in question, like the one we just did today on the Chisen property that cleared up 100-year, you know, right-of-way issue. So I think we need to be more strategic. I'm not supporting this plan.
Okay, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye?
I'm opposed.
Any opposed? Nay? Motion carries six to one.
Nay.
Mr. Vice Mayor, moving to item D22, possible initiation of an amendment to Reno Municipal Code, Chapter 6.
Okay, Madam Clerk, I don't believe we have any public comment, but I'll ask if the staff desires a presentation on this item at this time? Yes, Councilmember Breckus, you desire a staff presentation?
All right, Mr. Vice Mayor, we are moving over Claudia Hansen, who is the staff lead on this item. I do not believe that she has a prepared PowerPoint, however she is available, to give you a very brief synopsis of this and answer any questions you may have.
I don't think we need a synopsis. I'm going to just transfer over to Councilmember Breckus. Did you have a question for Ms. Hansen, Ms. Breckus?
Yeah, I did. I had a question about loading zones. Are you also looking at loading zones? Because I know we have another number of loading zones in front of private properties, which I think maybe predate accessibility and disability because that was maybe the look. Are you, are you also looking at those?
Not at this time. Claudia Hansen, Planning Manager of the City Manager's Office. We are just looking at the IRP programs. Loading zones would be covered under a different section of RMC.
Okay, okay.
For an initiation, just on this one section.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Councilmember Breckus, can I get a motion, please?
I'll move.
Okay, you have a second? Or I'm sorry, a motion by Councilmember Breckus. I'll second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any nay? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Vice Mayor, transitioning to item F1. This is an ordinance adoption to be read by the city attorney.
Mr. Hall or Mr. Shipman, please read the ordinance.
This is ordinance adoption, ordinance number 6564, ordinance of the Reno City Council, providing for the levy and manner of collection of assessments for the city of Reno, Nevada Neighborhood Improvement Project, otherwise known as the Downtown Reno Business Improvement District, ratifying, approving, and confirming all other actions previously taken by the city council of the city of Reno and the officers of said city directed toward the acquisition and improvements of said project in the district, together with other matters properly related there too.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any public comment on this item?
We have none, Mr. Vice Mayor.
I think, as I understood from an email that I received this morning or a letter, one of Father Duarte had a concern over this. So I'll just lodge it for the record that it was received by me. Any questions from council at this time? Seeing none, may I have a motion, please? Councilmember Breckus? Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Breckus. I'll second. Any additional discussion on this item at this time? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Vice Mayor, item F2, ordinance adoption to be read by the city attorney.
Mr. Hall?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Ordinance adoption, ordinance number 6565.
We went on, I took.
Councilmember Dewar, hold on one second. If you can go on, we'll mute you on our end. Mr. Hall, start over again, please, sorry.
Thank you. Ordinance adoption, ordinance number 6565, case number TXT 20-00004, police facility impact fee. Request to amend Reno Municipal Code Title 18, Annexation and Land Development, Chapter 18.14, Improvement Standards for New Development, in order to impose an impact fee for police facilities, together with other matters properly relating there too.
Thank you. Any questions from council at this time? Hearing none, I'll go to Councilmember Breckus for a motion.
You know, I did not support the introduction because I feel that the implementation through the administrative manual that was prepared is faulty.
Okay, I apologize. I'll go to Councilmember Dewar for a motion.
Yeah, I would make a motion to approve this item.
Okay, and I'll second.
I'll second them up.
Oh, we got the, Councilmember Weber has seconded. Any additional discussion at this time? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay? Okay, motion carries six to one.
Mr. Vice Mayor, transition to item, excuse me, G11. This is appointment to the E911 Advisory Board.
Okay, any public comment on this item?
None.
Discussion from council? May I have a motion, please? Councilmember Dewar?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve this item.
Okay.
Weber, second.
For Jeff Voss Camp. Although I'm not the liaison to the E911 Board, so I don't know who it is.
I apologize. No worries. We've got a motion and a second by Councilmember Weber. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay? Motion carries unanimously.
Vice Mayor, H1, items and updates from council regarding boards and commissions.
Okay, Councilmember Breckus? Okay, Councilmember Dewar?
Yes, I will make a motion to.
Just any idea?
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Yep, we're sorry.
I'm sorry. Let me, let me start again. I do not have any updates at this time, but I may have one by the time you do.
No problem. Councilmember Delgado? Oh, I don't, yes, I see none there. Councilmember Weber, any additions?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Jordan? And the, I have none. Thank you. Okay, that's, Councilmember Dewar, circle back to you.
Yeah, thank you. What I wanted to mention is something that I brought up before and at our last meeting, and I, maybe the meeting before. And that's that I'm requesting an agenda item. And I think this is the right place to do it, based on our agenda today, to bring back the no puppy mill ordinance. So I requested this. As I mentioned, the Animal Advisory Board has drafted a letter. I've signed it. If it hasn't been received by the city staff, we should reach out and find out where it is because it should have been received by now. We've had a moratorium in place and we just want to move this item forward.
No, I appreciate that and thank you for putting that back on. I don't know that this is the appropriate place on the agenda, but I think our city manager is indicating that he hears you loud and clear and will move forward on it.
Yeah, there was no other place for council items or council comment or amendments from the Animal Advisory Board. And we're on boards and commissions, so.
Yeah, awesome. Thank you so much. Appreciate you. Agenda item H2?
Mr. Vice Mayor, this is text amendment initiation as brought forward by you. Be looking for possible action.
Okay, I'll first ask if staff desires a staff, or if council desires a staff presentation? Okay, Councilmember Breckus, do you have a question?
Yeah, I, this is an amendment to Title 18. And when one of the members brings this forward, like the Skybridge ordinance that's going through the planning commission, it kind of jumps the queue of other issues in terms of the zoning code that's kind of moving slower, the moratorium that's moving slower. I have withheld bringing something that's of significant input and interest to Ward 1 residents. I think someone even provided public comment on that. But, because I want to see the core of the Title 18 move forward. I think that needs to be our priority. But this is also something coming forward. And I'm wondering, I'm not, I'm concerned about diverting focus on things that aren't getting done and removing slowly. And then two, I'm trying to understand what this is and why this is a priority of whoever's priority this is.
Okay, we'll turn it over to staff to respond to any questions.
So this is Angela Suss, Acting Community Development Director. We have had a number of developers approach us with projects, whether they are in suburban areas or more infill projects. And we are looking for tools in the toolbox to be able to help guide these projects moving forward. The development agreements are used broadly in other jurisdictions. We see them used in Henderson with PUDs oftentimes. And they often use them to deal with infrastructure issues, financing issues, phasing of development. A lot of times, we at the city put that within our PUDs. This would be another mechanism if we wanted to do that in association with PUDs. Separate from that, we also have projects that would go straight to a building permit. They would not require a special use permit or a planned unit development. And our downtown is a great example, where we have projects that maybe there's some, something unique about them that we don't really have a mechanism to condition a project because they go straight to building permits. And I can just throw out some examples. And again, I'm not trying to make it specific to any one project, but these are some of the things that we've had discussions on with developers. Let's take a project in downtown Reno that's an existing building. And maybe the thought is to tear down that building and put in something new. So when you tear down that building, there were sewer fees associated with that previous use. There were park fees associated with that previous use. A new building may require a road abandonment. And so if the project can go straight to a building permit, the advantage of having a development agreement is that the city can put in some assurances. And that gives the city some regulations, some ability to make sure that they get what they need in terms of infrastructure, timing. A great example would be if we had a road abandonment in our downtown area and we wanted to make sure that the project moved forward before we were comfortable abandoning that road. This is something I know council has brought up multiple times, that clawback rule. A development agreement would be one tool to be able to tie those two together that maybe we haven't used in the past. We don't have that ability to do right now. Because the way the code is written is that you have to have a development agreement associated with a project of regional significance. And again, we're trying not to tie it to any one, two, or three projects because these are things that have come up over the last couple of months. I think as part of the reasons to why this is moving forward now. This is something that we drafted language as part of the development or the zoning code. So we have kind of a starting point of what this could look like. I also think with everything that's happening with COVID and reignite and things that we can do to help speed up development, this is one more tool that we can offer. The advantage to the city is that a development agreement is required to go to city council for approval. There's also language that requires that it come back to city council, minimum of once every two years. So if the city wants to review it again, make sure that the developer is compliant, make sure that the city council is comfortable with the way they're complying with it. There's another opportunity for the city council to be involved through that mechanism. Again, this is just one more tool in the toolbox. We have a number of things we've brought up as part of the zoning code update. But this is one that's come, I would say, come more to light as we're seeing projects in the downtown area move forward. Again, it would go straight to building permit. And we have all these added conditions that we would like to make sure that they move forward with. But we have no ability to have that kind of internal agreement between the developer and the city to tie to that project.
Thank you, Ms. Suss. And I want to just say a couple of comments. Number one, I think it is consistent with some of the comments that we've made at council over the past many months about just, we'll just call it, changes to code or ordinance, different sections.
changes to code or ordinance, different sections. And I don't believe that I've attempted to, or anyone has attempted to, jump over other projects or other items that might come before us. I think it's just a matter of knowing that we need to be flexible and innovative. And sometimes you bring smaller parts of a greater whole. There may be things in Title 18 that have need revisions. I don't dispute that there are, and perhaps those are important things. This one is not more or less important than those. I think this one identifies a very specific need, an idea that, as you've said, another tool to get some of the things that we want to accomplish as a body done. My understanding is that all the other regional government bodies in our area use these, have some familiarity with them, that they are a way for us to avoid things like zombie projects, ones that get proved in, you know, 2007, but not built until 2020, but not being able to have those check-ins that a development agreement might provide. And so I think rather than making perfect be the enemy of the good, we should allow this type of opportunity to use those kind of development agreements. I think they are proven effective in other communities and are just another way for us to do what we need to do as a body in terms of being responsive and flexible and allowing us to have our imprint on these kind of projects. So I'll leave it at that, and I'll transition now to Councilmember Jordan.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate staff working on these. I know these are something we have talked about at length over the almost eight years I've been on the council. And it's...I think the timing of this is actually perfect. I was listening to, I think it was a Bloomberg story recently, and some individuals from some of the larger cities, they were talking about how cities are best going to weather through the COVID and recover from. And they said cities are going to have to get nimble and act as quickly as they can in order to to try to get their businesses to flourish and to bring the economies back and to get some of the tax rules going in order to keep some fiscal balance for our cities to employ all the folks that we employ, fire and police, and keep our roads going and our toilets flushing. So I thought it was interesting, this was on our agenda, when they were talking about the same old way of doing things. It's not going to be the same old way we're going to be able to recover from this. And to me, as the representative for 70% of the downtown core in Ward 5, this is definitely something that I support. I think it allows us to have individualized input, project by project, but for things to move maybe more efficiently and quickly, particularly in this time, I think it's really, really important that we do that. So...and in light of the fact that we have a number of parcels that through many years of work are now cleared for development, and we want to see those go vertical. We want to see those projects come to life. And any way that we can help create the jobs to do that, I think we should all be, you know, supportive of that and do it efficiently and as quickly as we can. So thank you, staff, for working on this. I think this is really important at this time.
Thank you, Councilmember Doer.
Yes, thank you. I think that the development agreements offer a terrific opportunity. It's...I can see the upside. What I'm concerned about is I don't see the downside. And I just want to ask a few questions to get it on the record. I don't know if we move forward with this, if the next step is to bring it to ordinance next week, you know, next meeting, or if we're going to have some time to flush out what this looks like. So I just thought I better say a few things right now. One is, right now, when we do a permit, there's notice provided, notice to the council. We learn that somebody's applied for something. There's notice to the public, and there are certain timeframes, there are certain noticing rights. What I don't understand, or what I'd like to address, I don't have the answers right now, but before we enact an ordinance, I'd like you to come back and lay out how it would work. So who would get notice and when? I know that you said it would come back to council, but what I'm concerned about is having all of the details baked into an agreement that the council doesn't know is coming, maybe the public doesn't know is coming. And it says that the application or permit would be processed later, which is the thing that would have a formal noticing. So could you just address that one, first of all?
Two things, maybe. When most of these downtown projects go straight to a building permit, there's no site plan review, no special use permit, no zoning. So there is no public noticing, there is nothing that goes to city council, there's no yellow postcards that get mailed out, they go straight to a building permit. With a development agreement, if a project was moving forward and wanted to include a development agreement, again, that's an agreement between the developer and the city, that would have to go to city council. So that would be a public hearing.
So the question is, that was my next question, is whose choice is it to do these development agreements? So for example, you just made the point. They don't need a publicly noticed item, a building permit, et cetera. If...I could see a situation where someone's saying, well, I don't have to do this, but I'm offering to do this, and we're saying, but we want you to do it. And it's this back and forth of sort of a chicken and egg, and whose idea is this? And who is it benefiting, and why?
Yeah, and it has mostly to do if there's something unique about the project. And again, we talk about if there's timing, maybe there's phasing of a project. Something that, right now, you can submit a building permit, but maybe they wanted to have a longer timeframe to keep their building permit active or to be connected to when they had to put in road improvements. So let's say a project came forward in two phases. And phase one did not require that they put in any road improvements. Maybe they didn't have to put in changes to street intersections because it didn't warrant, just based on that phase one. However, we weren't sure, let's say we're not sure, if phase two's going to happen, right? Because the economy is an unknown. So as that example, that would be a good time when we could have a development agreement so that the city would have some maturity that those traffic improvements were going to be put in, and the developer would have some maturity as to when those traffic improvements had to be put in.
So can we...I got it, and I'm trying to be mindful of the time. Can we request that there be a development agreement? Can it be at our request, or is it only at the developer's request?
It would have to be something where there would have to be a reason to do a development agreement, and both parties have to agree to it.
Okay. I'll save my time, but I have one more question on it before we vote. Thank you.
Yeah, I want to...
Councilmember Breckus, you there?
Yeah.
Oh, you're ready. You're at the floor, George.
Yes, I am. I am. So in 1999, as a staff planner, I wrote the development agreement ordinance together with the city attorney. And we've only done one at the City of Reno, and that was Meadowwood Mall that wanted a development agreement. And they're not a bad tool, they're a good tool. I've always argued that Reno should be using them more. But this is really an issue to me, a focus of this Reno City Council. We have an, you know, the issue that, well, cities need to do things better and think differently. We're operating with a 1990s-era zoning code. And while you can't point to one development that it's problematic for, you probably could point to 100, and you could point to 100 neighborhood situations that it's not working for. And that's been our priority with our staff, of what we want them to accomplish. And let's get through that before we do this. Because what I'm hearing, argument, well, maybe this guy would want it for this, or this person that. I mean, even with the shade ordinance, it became very evident that it was about one property. Because one property is in for permitting on something that would...needed that shade ordinance to be removed. The Skybridge that we moved ahead and we're having these considerations on, we know there was one person here who wanted that, the university. On this ordinance, we don't know anyone who's queued up for it, or at least that's not being represented. So let's work on getting the suite of the code improvements forward. Let's work on this moratorium that we're running exceptions to, that we keep extending on the liquor. And then let's have a fair discussion on priorities beyond that. Please, council. I've been holding and holding about an Airbnb ordinance. I have about a dozen residents who has reached out in the last two months. We're seeing Airbnbs or short-term rentals taking away very needed affordable housing stock in the midtown area. And we need a regulation for that. We need other regulatory needs. If someone is not willing to come forward and tell us, my project is so critical that you spend the time and your resources changing the ordinance, then let's put this back on the back burner. This is about priority and focus for the city council. And I think if we go with this right now, we're really skewing that. And when this agreement comes through, when it's revealed who this is, we'll say, okay, their rights, their interests, a focus of our city attention, they take top dog over these other ones, and that'll be unfortunate.
Okay, any other councilmembers? Councilmember Doer?
Yeah, I had already brought this up with the attorneys, but I want to daylight it here while everybody's present. And that is that I'm concerned that...I want to make sure, let me put it this way, that a development agreement doesn't lock in regulations at a point in time. So for example, if there is...there was a reference made to it in terms of being downtown. But I can see these being used all over town, and there was a reference made to it being used in conjunction with a PUD. So what I think there should be is, if we move forward with them, there should be a disclaimer in there that it does not commit or lock in regulations that are in place at the time, especially in light of the fact that our staff are working very quickly on Title 18 to implement regulations after the master plan. So I wouldn't want a development agreement to come forward. We don't have the regulation in place just yet, we know what's coming, we know we're working on it. And they say, well, this is a simple one, trees. We don't have to do that tree thing because that wasn't adopted yet, or we don't have to do that fencing thing, or whatever was in the master plan, you know, that sustainability thing, because we did a development agreement. I don't think that...that's one thing I don't think should be in a development agreement, is this locking in a regulation. My last question is the timing. What is...if we approve this today, what are your next steps? Are you going to at least hold some kind of public hearing to allow the community to know that we're working on this and make sure we get input on them?
Well, if this is initiated today, the typical process for a text amendment is to draft the information. We've been sending it out to the NAB for comment, text amendments. We've been sending it out to the NAB for comment, based on frankly comments we've gotten from council, but it's not going out to the neighbors. So we've tried to add that to our process. And then it would go to Planning Commission during a public hearing, and then it would go back to city council twice.
All right, I'm comfortable with that process. We're not having that meeting, they've been put on hold for a number of months. So, you know, we're doing pretty well with town halls. So perhaps you could schedule a town hall just to go over this and answer the public's questions. That would be very satisfactory to me. And it looks like you keep calling it a tool, so I think it is a positive. And I like the idea of wrapping many issues in one thing. But I also don't...I also want to have the council, or it's called the city, an equal part at the table. But there should be something in it for us, as well as whoever's asking for it. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no additional comments, I'll call for a motion. Councilmember Doer, can you give me a motion, please?
Sure, I'll move forward with item H2, which is a direction to staff to initiate an ordinance change to amend section in Title 18 relating to development agreements. Second, Jordan.
I have a question.
Hold on, please. I have a motion by Councilmember Doer, a second by Councilmember Jordan. Any further discussion at this time? Councilmember Breckus?
Let me ask staff, do you anticipate this going for consideration by the Planning Commission before the zoning code update?
If we're getting initiation today, then yes, it would go to Planning Commission before the zoning code update.
Okay, will it go to the Planning Commission before the liquor sales ordinance?
Timing wise, I'm not sure. We haven't put together a schedule.
Okay, so this jumps ahead of updating the code, which is a benefit for all projects downtown. Because one would think that, why vest under the current rules of zoning when you're going to work on a code that's better for everyone? Okay, I oppose. Thank you.
Okay, call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries six to one.
Mr. Vice Mayor, with that, we have no 6:00 PM public hearing. Transitioning to general public comment. It should be noted for the record that we received multiple letters of concern after item C3 had already been voted upon. We received letters of concern from Glenn Corrano, Lee Saludos, Sharon Saludos, Stuart Fegan, Garrett Gordon, Tina Knapp, and Ben Farahi. Additionally, Grace Picard submitted letters of concern for item C3. Those have been submitted to council. And as you noted, Donna Clontz did submit her public comment during the parks item that was moved to general public comment, however, it was noted during the item as well. With that, we have no further general public...
Madam Clerk, before you go on, I wanted to say, I think several came into my inbox just at the very last minute while we were underway as well. So I'll send any remaining comments to you.
Thank you, Councilmember Doer.
Madam Clerk, you mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, Bob Calhoun reached out and provided public comment, but you didn't say the nature of his public comment. I think he was someone who is expressing concern about short-term rentals, neighborhood nuisance. Could you forward that again to me?
Councilmember Breckus will have Ms. Attorney deal with that offline. I didn't see it either, but if it exists, we'll get it in that regard. Thank you, appreciate your comments there.
Yes, we will resend this information. This has come through. Chief Deputy Councilman sent all of this information to council in an exported Excel document. It will also be uploaded online.
And just a reminder, we still have our redevelopment agency board. So at this time, I'll ask for a motion for adjournment. Is that Madam Clerk?
That is correct.
Motion to adjourn, Doer.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Doer. Can I have a second, please?
Second, Weber.
Second by Ms. Weber, motion and second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Vice Mayor, calling redevelopment agency to order. Roll call for redevelopment. Breckus?
Note for the record, she's here.
Thank you. Doer?
Here.
Delgado?
Yep.
Weber?
Here.
Jordan?
Note also for the record that she's present.
Present, just on mute. Reese?
Here.
Chivi? I believe we have just lost Madam Mayor through the transition, but Mr. Vice Mayor, you do have a quorum of the redevelopment agency. Should be noted for the record, we have no general public comment as it relates to the agenda or redevelopment. We're now transitioning to approval of redevelopment agency. You'd be looking for a motion?
Okay, may I have a motion, please, on the agenda?
Move to approve.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Weber, second by Councilmember Doer. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Vice Mayor, item L4. This is the secondary piece of what came before council at the last meeting. Direction of staff to finalize agreements.
Yes, I don't believe there's any public comment, or does... And I don't believe the council desires staff presentation. May I have a motion, Councilmember Doer?
Yeah, I'll motion to approve L4.
Okay, I'll second.
Weber's...
Oh, Councilmember Weber, sorry, you were the seconder. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item at this time? Call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please, no. Motion carries unanimously.
Item L5, updates from boards regarding redevelopment from council.
Okay, I don't believe anyone on the redevelopment will have any comments here, and so I'll transition to the final public comment period.
We have none registered.
Okay, and may I have a motion for adjournment, please?
Move to adjourn.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Weber, second by Councilmember Doer.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries unanimously. We're adjourned. Please join us for our attorney-client privilege meeting.